I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate the effort the board has put in into this final version of the first part of the 306 rules. I know the State Board values feedback when it specifically identifies areas of concern or suggestions. So, in my usual fashion, I have a document for you with a chart that lays out codes, the topics and possible suggestions. They range from some very minor tweaks, for example, in codes, like I think you might have a code area in one section that's referencing school psychological services, and I don't think you want it to reference that. And you have like a couple word things, like for example, when you're talking about literacy, you have fluence, not fluency. So those are just some of the things. Let me just highlight a couple, because I know I've got a limited amount of time here. I'd like you to consider adding perhaps cognitive complexity, or if that's too technical language for you, depth of knowledge to the definition of rigor. I think that will also help to support the application of rigor at the end of the document, that new section on establishing state academic standards. I'd also, I'm just gonna jump down a little bit, the digital literacy one is referencing 30636, but that's a code that's not yet approved. And I wonder, should the code actually go to the current code, which is 30642, which actually is in a, went into effect in 2019? So it's not due to expire anytime soon. I would also point out that under the student educator ratios, this might be a situation where you wanna maybe adjust your definition of educate, of educator just for this section. Because remember, educator is including anybody credentialed or licensed by the state. Well, in this section, that means literally, a school board could vote, under the new guidance of the one-year certificate of eligibility, to put a paraprofessional and count that as an educator based on the definition. So I think you might need to think about that a little bit, okay? Yeah, the next one I would just point out is that, please think about the remote, the remote learning sections. One of the big feedback that I had from educators around that was adding a fourth condition where schools could go into remote learning, when their schools are being used for civics and community events, like voting and annual meetings. And I think that'd be a great way to blend and model for our students, the civics/educational connection. So just maybe something to think about there. On the K to 8 curriculum, I'm just gonna put on my old math hat as the form of math special state, no mention of early numeracy in the kindergarten. I would really, really employ you, that early numeracy is just as important as early literacy. So think about that, please. The next thing I would just kind of highlight, as I'm going through these quick ones, is I, I appreciate your effort to really say, hey, let's go by what's in RSA 193E and that list. So think about how you balance family consumer science and business ed. And the last thing I would just say is, think about, I'm still gonna plug to get one more elective credit back, think about the integrated approach of logic rhetoric and personal finance literacy. Like, could those live in an integrated way, like you wrote in the English and the math sessions, for statistical reasoning and for the writing components? Just think about that. Okay? Because that would give you a credit back towards the electives.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We have no one else signed up for the comment? Okay, time to move on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, members of the committee. For the record, my name's Dave Luna, I'm a member of the House Education Committee for the past three terms, and have been vice chair when we were in the majorities back in 2019, 2020. I'm also a member of, of a committee called the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee for Education, which is established in statute and, and has specific statutory responsibilities as far as any recommended or any changes to academic standards that the, that the State Board of Education may be considering through rulemaking. In fact, the statute specifically states, and this is in 193 E2A, parts four, paragraph C and D, but paragraph C states, "The State Board shall not amend any existing academic standards and shall not approve any new academic standards without the prior review and recommendation of the Legislative Oversight Committee established in RSA C8A," which is the committee I was just talking about. And then just for clarity, in terms of statutoric definition, paragraph D in this defines academic standards shall be the same meaning, and this is in great legislative parlance, should the same meaning as RSA 193E2A, paragraph six B. And so paragraph six B says academic standards means what a student should know and be able to do in a course or at grade level. So, the last time this Oversight Committee met was back on June 27th, 2024. And, and we, unfortunately, I don't believe there were any members or any representatives from the Department of Education at this, but we were taking on the initial proposal dated February 15th, 2024, of the changes to the minimum standards. And so, as handouts, we received a 45-page markup, and I believe it was markup from JLCAR on the minimum standards. The, the committee, over a period of approximately two hours, was able to get through only the first two pages of this, and most of the notes, according to mine here, were leave as it is now. And these are actually in definitions. So leave as is, make no changes. Unfortunately, the committee didn't make it past the first two pages out of the 45 we received, but, but going back to, to the statute, I don't think the committee was certainly in a position where it had either completed a thorough review, nor could make any sort of recommendation as to changes. And I understand not all the changes to the minimum standards are related to what a student should know and at what courses at grade level, but some clearly do. And I just hope the board will consider that when, when reviewing and taking position on the standards today.
Do you have written testimony you can submit?
I don't.
So we have no one else signed up?
Yeah, go ahead. My name's Steve Rockenberg. I was a long time current technical principal in the state, elementary teacher before that. And I just have a brief testimony about the fee change coming up.
Can you just like represent, identify who you represent, so I can put it into the notes?
Yeah, I represent my own company. So I support, let me clarify, I support about 85 teachers, current technical teachers going through the process of becoming, like getting their license. So through my company, this position has existed for decades, where someone, let's say auto mechanic, or a nurse, or graphic designer, is making a switch to a teacher.
No problem, I just wanted to identify.
Rockenberg tells people, follow that. And I came here today not to question the quality of work by the Bureau of Prudential and they did a great job, not to question the budget of the Bureau of Prudential, which I don't know, and I'm sure it's very demanding. I know that, for example, we're sitting here today because there's so many more people coming to alternative routes versus the traditional route of going to college. What I can say is you have a fee going up from $120 to $500, which is the cost associated with the jump from the moment you get your stated eligibility, which is sort of the ticket to begin the process, to the act of actually building your plan. And that jump of 120 to 500 are, that's the moment I'm working with people. And I'm working with people who are relatively bright, very bright in the field, but have no knowledge of the world of education. I mean, they make a big, big jump. And I say the world of education, they, they've experienced education, but they don't know the behind the scenes, what it takes to become a licensed teacher, for example. So I just worry that some of those folks, and while you hear this, some of these folks I'm dealing with, that might be an intimidating number for them to make the jump of where they're going. Again, I'm not questioning the quality of the Bureau of Prudential, they do a great job, I deal with them all the time, not questioning their budget, because I'm sure their budget's under a lot of duress because of the nature of more people coming this route versus traditionally. I just, inflation's been pretty high over the past stretch of time, I'm just not sure 120 to 500 is a jump you see in any world that we're in that high. Though maybe there's a couple weird worlds, but by and large, that's a very, very large jump. And I just heard the board to consider, it's one cohort group, it's a one-time event for a person, so once they pay, they're done, but I worry about the person who, when they're thinking about the change, and we're outlining what's coming, that 500 is a lot of money.
Can you just clarify, we have three different places where the fee is 500?
Yeah, so it's, it's the intern, intern plan. So, yeah, so if you're doing career change, your first step would be a stated eligibility, which goes from 50 to 120. And then once you get a job, you have to file the intern plan for the 30 days of teaching. And that's, that's 120 now, which is a confusing big process for them, to bend down to 500. So when you're outlining it, that's just what I'm worried about. But I, I want to make clear, I'm not here to question the quality of services, I'm not here to question their budget, I'm just appealing to you to sort of
I appreciate it.
Recognize that there's people who are making a massive change in their life. And they, they, it goes well, they're in long-term, you'll, you'll get money long-term from them. Just the short-term is what I'm a little worried about.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We have to share a pen. I need, we need a pen. I have a bunch of pens in my bag, and they fall out. My, my dog goes for my grandma, and when she does, it upends my bag. Pens fall out, so. Okay, so we have no one else signed up to speak, so thank you everyone who gave a call to comment. So our first item of business, we'll make you guys write up takes, which you like to come up with the 306s, and then we can address the additional changes that were suggested. I know, so, not ideal.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. For the record, Julie Shae, ULS rules coordinator. We will sit down, go to the floor. Um, so, you have the minimum standards proposal inside of you. There are a few things that I wanted to point out for you since the last time that you all met and discussed this. I think I mentioned last time that Attorney Brown and I had the opportunity to meet with OLS, and we brought the proposal to them, and there were a few items that they pointed out to us, and so we made changes in the proposal. So I just wanted to point those out to you, so you know what they are and why they were changed, and make sure if you have any questions, we can answer them. So the first item that was brought to our attention is on page two in the definitions, and it was the definition of equity. And this was a tense issue because of the way that we phrased it, it didn't make sense in the tense where it was used. So, the other thing that we changed is when we were looking at it, we actually only used the word equity once, but the word equitable is used numerous times. So we changed the main definition to be equitable, and then at the end it says the term also includes equity. So the changes made to the definition are not meant to change the spirit of the definition, but they're meant to fix the tense issues so that it makes sense with the, with the proposal. And then it also leads to a change on page eight, which is where that definition or that word is used the most frequently. So we changed the phrase equity gaps to gaps in equity. So I just wanted to point that out, and if anyone has any concerns or questions about that.
I, if I, have I some concerns on the previous page? Are they verbatim?
Um, yep.
We tried to fix all of it.
Yeah, so on page one E, in the second sentence, notwithstanding these rules, schools may require, yeah, either should be that students achieve, or require students to achieve.
Sure.
Yeah, here, that's a good catch.
That's actually something we also, again, that was a flipping of putting the statute in the first part, so that may have been when I was rearranging that, that we just got, so I can stick a that in here.
Yep, and then at the end of the sentence, and, it says schools, and it's, and that schools.
Sure.
So you, you need to add to that.
Yeah.
We'll probably find some more of these.
And, and these, these types of items, as far as like grammar and editing, like I can, I can fix those, OLS or JLCAR, you know, you can fix the citations and grammar things that don't change the substance of the rule, I can change those in post, so.
Okay, so the next
But I'd rather change them now.
Yep, so on the next page, under, under F5, again, it's the tense that's used in the previous four lines, and then this one just begins attention. I wonder whether it should be attention, attention is insured to, or attention, it's, it doesn't line up with the previous four in terms of tense.
That's under E, F?
F.
F5.
Yeah.
So attention is insured to work, to work studies, practices, something that qualifies attention.
Attention is paid to work.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, just to make it parallel.
Sure.
Is, is given, paid.
Now I have no comments until page 22, so.
Are we, are we going to make it now, or? Well, pretty much the, the proposal that you've been working on, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna point out the major changes that I had, and then the rest I haven't explained.
So let's, let's let her go first and point out those major changes, just so we
I only have one more.
Oh, great.
So on page nine, there were some questions around the language that was used for the waiver request in 30610F, so was that helpful in our prepared remarks?
Yes, so, the language that we added, so this is, this is dealing, we've had a couple of these in the last year, so.
Can you just give us the citation list, so that everybody on the board is?
Yes, so we are in 30610, on my, I believe that's on page nine.
Yeah.
It deals with food and nutrition services. The rule deals with waivers requests that we have, that you may have, and we've had a couple of these in the last year, to the requirement under 18911 dash A. And the OLS was a little bit concerned with the language there and making sure that it was clear that there were clear-cut standards that the board would use in order to determine whether or not a waiver would be granted by the board. And so the language that we added was in, was in F, and so it basically said, we added language there to make sure
And F is on page 10.
Yes. Rolls to page 10, a waiver shall be approved if the State Board determines the school district has a reasonable basis, and that's kind of where our draft had ended. And so the language that we added to address the concern that OLS had, was that the reasonable basis has to be not inconsistent with the purposes of RSA 18911A and, and this section, after reviewing information in the waiver request, and then it picks up with the language that we've had before. So this just makes it clear that the reason for the waiver is consistent with the law and the rules that are probably dated here. Very minor change, but address their concern that any time that you all are given discretion to grant a waiver, that there's parameters around that discretion.
Okay, so that's all you guys have, the major changes?
Those were the major changes we had, based upon our consultation and addressing the, the issues, and anything else where that was, like this very small grammar problem, we're not on the list, but those, those were all.
Yeah, the citation issues that.
Yeah. Example of citation issues, where we were citing the wrong thing, or we had a typo.
Right.
And so.
Probably have some, so, what I'd like to do is have board members bring up some whatever issues they have, and then maybe Christine answers this.
Go all the way through, page 22. And I, it's, I, I just mainly got clarification, it would be C, C is a cat, where it says the required locally-approved curriculum, and above that, it states, the local school board shall require that curriculum, and then we state in C, required locally-approved curriculum? Why was that added when it's, it's, it's?
Obvious. Well, I think that was, and you guys can correct me on this, if we reserve, I think that was just a reassurance to folks who were concerned that if we didn't spell that out, there might be some misunderstanding of what curriculum we're talking about.
Because then it drives the question, how is it locally-approved? What is the process to be locally-approved?
Curriculum's all, it's all approved at local, we don't, we don't do it here, so it's sort of redundant, but it's just clarifying that it has to be the locally-approved curriculum. So, is that, you know, that's what you guys said?
I think that sums it up pretty well, but it's like, the curriculum is created by the local school district, local school districts make those decisions by local school boards, going here and approving those curriculum decisions, according to whatever their policies are for curriculum development that are developed by the local district.
We have a couple of, when we were doing these, these strategies, some of the feedback we got was to basically be redundant on purpose, to, to write stuff in there like this just to emphasize.
Would it make more sense in A above to say the local school board shall require that the approved curriculum content? And you've, you've established that it's approved curriculum at that point, and then everything that follows.
So move what's in C up to A and then not have to do it further on, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, hold on a second.
You, you opened that can of worms right at the beginning, and.
Yeah, so the local school board shall require that be locally-approved, is what you're suggesting there, and then after that, we can discuss this. I don't know if locally-approved in C or in A is more relevant, you know, I understand you're wanting to move it to the top, right? Yeah, let's just, I'm gonna do it. It's really redundant, it doesn't need to be there. It's just, that was to reassure people and make them feel better. So, you could put it in A, well, which, which is more redundancy, because you're saying the local school board shall require that they locally-approved curriculum content.
So that's why, why I wonder, why don't you just say that the approved curriculum, and we take locally-approved, because you just said the local school board shall require that the approved curriculum.
I, I hear you, and I agree with you from, strictly, and early.
All right, okay, move on, page 24.
I feel like if everybody in the field, like we didn't get any objection for this from everybody, so.
Okay.
I just. Emphasize locally-controlled as much as possible.
All right, there you go, there you go, the balance-suspect approach.
Yeah, yeah.
With reference to personal finance literacy, it, we juggle between personal financial literacy, personal finan, finance literacy. Why don't we, on page 24?
She's on page 24, I don't.
So I was saying 16, that is directly quoted from the statute, do you know where else it like juggles? Because like, I, I personally take issue with that.
I, I would wonder whether or not we should just say drop literacy, just say personal finance, because that's how, that's how it's referred to.
So the, what she's referring to is, so in 183E colon two dash A10, it says personal finance literacy. So we basically just try to make it married to statute.
We are, I, I thought that.
Does that say personal or person?
It says personal finance literacy.
Personal finance, okay.
So, we, so, lots of representatives about their grammatic instructions. Yeah. So we're, yeah, we're adopting the poor grammar of the legislature.
I just, and other references further on, so what happens, what hap, yeah, okay.
No, no, go ahead. I agree, it's, so we.
And you know exactly where we don't use personal finance literacy, because I could go in and like mirror it to the statute, I just, I don't, I can do it.
It's within this body.
Okay.
And it, and it really was, when I read it, I thought, why doesn't it say financial? Because every time we refer to it, we say financial, but now I understand it's.
Surely we were trying to mirror the legal laws. Also on page 24, does the civics encompass constitutional studies, maybe of that nature, just want to make sure.
I think the statute is pretty explicit about what items are covered in it. If you look at 18911, I believe it goes through all of the.
And just to be clear, like, so that language is what just mirrors the statute?
Yes, everything that's added in that section was because, when we went to the Legislative Oversight Committee, we, you know, they pointed out the fidelity to the statute, and so we made sure that each of those listings mirrored the statute.
Yeah, so that's been one of our consistent issues throughout this rewrite, is making sure.
A lot of stuff changed.
Yeah, making sure that the rule's very tightly aligned to statute, so that we weren't getting out and requiring stuff that we weren't authorized to require, or that there was a previous statutory reference to, that there's not anymore, so it was, it took a lot of work to do that. So that's where you see some of the clumsiness here, and some of the changes are just trying to align it to this statute.
Are you ready? Bill?
I'm good, I mean, I think, I think a lot of mirrors there.
Got it?
Yeah, okay. All right, anybody else? All right, so for Christine's, do you want to go by this point by point, or just?
Yeah, we've gone through it as well, so I can, you know, we can kind of talk about the items.
Care to share these, because we shared a copy this morning?
So with the applicability, she's 100% correct, I think we ended up renumbering it after we wrote that, so I fixed that, so they're pointing to the right parts. With educator, I believe that the use of credential versus licensed was actually intentional here, because credentials cover items, like licenses and credentials overlap, but credentials also cover things that aren't licenses. And so I think that was intentional there.
What about cognitive complexity to the definition, like the depth, I think it's a nice phrase.
Anything that, that all of you decided you want to add in here based on that?
Yeah, these are your.
Type it right in right now, so.
Well, does anybody have any objection to that?
I'm just trying to figure out if it's in the statute.
So, right, right how it says means depth, so she would just add depth and cognitive complexity. So they, they do mean slightly, but they.
Yeah, I, I could add in that, like I like the term as well. Like when I see, look, the alternative that was provided was depth of knowledge, which I see is already in there, if you look at depth and, and apply knowledge, I think that concept's in there, but.
I think it's a nice phrase, I don't have any objection to it. It kind of gets to a different aspect of rigor that we had. Anybody has any objection? It's kind of, I'd be okay with that.
Okay. I think there was a suggestion change with 30604, we got changed, considered changing scholarship to achieving competencies. I think achieving competencies was what we intended there, based upon our prior discussions for the last several months. There was also in 13, in 30604, let me get to that, 30604, 13.
What are we gonna change?
On page 6. Currently says providing alternative means of demonstrating proficiency and competencies resulting in more credit for high school diploma or the equivalent, and this relates back to, just to make sure I get this, this relates back to. Oh, 13, oh, you're looking, yes, so you're looking at.
I'm sure you understand this.
Policy.
I can see 13, so that's page 6.
Yeah, so I'm just, this is doing a policy.
I think she's, I think it's a grammar change, award versus awarding.
Right.
I, I think awarding sounds right for the sentence.
Well, it'll, it says resulting in the award of credit, and I think, again, if you just say awarding of credit, you're chopping out a couple words, it's more succinct.
I'm not sure CC's suggesting that so much as just changing. I'm not sure Cece's suggesting that so much as just changing awarding, resulting in the awarding of credit as opposed to resulting at the award of credit.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I think she's suggesting.
All right.
That's correct, Commissioner, adding I N G or more.
So it's just. That's how I was reading what you had there.
This is just a stylistic change.
Yeah, it's a grammatical thing.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So there was also a suggestion that twenty-one B, which is basic learning standards, twenty-one is basic learning standards, including A is homework, including how it is assessed and assessed. B promoting students from one learning level or grade to another based on achievement of competencies. And it was suggested that that was repetitive of number eighteen. And eighteen says is promoting students from one learning level or learning level or grades to another based on achievement of competencies and alignment with the district's academic standards. As a group consistent with RSA one ninety-two E two A, revenue four.
Is the same. Well, do you think if we kept it, we'd change, change, use of promotion? Liz, I'm only referring to twenty-one B, that statement itself.
I, yeah, I was just trying to, that you were suggesting that it was duplicative of eighteen.
Yeah.
So I was wanting to just refresh our recollection of what eighteen was.
Yeah.
I don't have it memorized, I don't expect the same word as it memorized either. Um, um. So suggesting that B was duplicative, um.
To eighteen right above?
Yes.
To eighteen above.
Right.
Um.
If they're consistent.
They're definitely consistent, I don't have a problem with them being, and, and I'm not necessarily sure that I'm certainly a problem with them being duplicative. Um, because I think they're slightly different, um.
Well, one is describing what happens under basic learning standards, and included with basic learning standards is promotion. So it's more a listing of what's required, basic learning standards, not.
So what is the learning environment in the areas of learning standards? So, again, it's one of those things where they probably are duplicative, but it's probably duplicative just happening in there, it was too secondarily.
So this is in the policies, do it required section. So like, I'm trying to put myself in the seat of the local school board saying, we need policies on, policies today on all these things. So we need a policy on, from that perspective, we need a policy of eighteen states, and we need a policy of eleven and twenty-one, which you couldn't reference whatever your local policy is for eighteen in that.
But if somebody were to look up the basic learning standards, they would understand how a student progresses, right, and make reference to it there.
It's all about referencing that.
Yeah, I just wonder, so my only hesitation, just because it's a new proposal, is what happens if we take it out of there? And it's only listed above, does that cause any problems for anybody when they're looking through, and they're trying to look things up? Oh, the basic learning standards, I looked that up, it's not in there. Yeah, it was mentioned above, but do we need it in both places just for a cataloging kind of purpose?
I, I mean, I think the policies could be sort of different, because I think of basic learning standards, if I was seeing it as a school board member trying to develop policies. I'm kind of trying to develop what my culture, it's a little bit more of a culture and climate issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Where I think eighteen addresses more like, uh, a progression. Um, and so if I was developing policies, I might be looking at slightly different language. Both of them talk about promoting students based upon competencies, but the purpose for eighteen and twenty-one, I think are slightly different.
That, that's kind of my read as well, so.
I think I would.
Is it a harm in leaving it in, put it that way?
Yeah, so I have a question, is, what, the relevance is being a standard, is promoting the standard or is promotion the standard?
I see what you're saying. Promotion of, right, just, right, you could just phrase it that way.
In both places?
Um. Let me think.
No, I think the other one's active, the other one is an active verb, it's supporting, it's providing, it's.
You're talking about twenty-one B?
The other one is consistent with the, with the terms above it, so you've got supporting.
Uh, so are you talking about eighteen being promotion of?
Eighteen is, eight, no, eighteen is consistent.
No, no, it's twenty-one B.
I think it's twenty-one B they want to.
But then when you go down to twenty-one B, it's, the others aren't active, so you could make that passive as well.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So promotion though.
Promotion of, yeah.
Yes.
And you're doing what I chose not to do.
I can't help myself.
Give it a, a good end.
I, I'm influenced by my leader, are we gonna tell?
I did get one, I, I did make one chance to ask that ever utilized, we choose to use.
We had, we had done that in most places.
I know, but I called a couple more.
Yeah, and that was because it was newer text to me, forgot to draw rules.
I could, I could give it all up for my thrill at having cursor writing down included listing.
Um, okay, so then, X, twenty-two.
So the next, yeah, so the next one I have is twenty-two, um, the question was, does the exploration of career pathways apply to all grades K through twelve? And, um, I think that's completely, I, I think it's completely open. Uh, because this is only a section that is supposed to be in, requiring the development of policies. And so a school district could choose to have career exploration pathways K to twelve.
It also specifies development.
Exactly, exactly.
And developmentally appropriate, but it would have to be, and there are things that you do in a kindergarten setting that is kind of like a career, yeah, career paths. That was exactly what I was thinking.
Right, no, that's already done, pretty right.
And the kinds, yeah, and the kinds of things that you do in a kindergarten classroom looking very different than what they look in the high school level.
I think this makes it more explicit, I would want to see you consciously put that into the way, into your planning, to have kids think about it.
But we're not mandating K twelve, so I think open to that.
It's just that they have a policy that discusses.
You have that, top of the policy discusses how you don't develop that.
No, I think this is consistent with the idea that local school districts are going to develop their curriculum as a whole set of, like, what is the profile of the learner that they want to graduate from their districts?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so the next one again is a, um, citation, a- again, we can fix that once we determine what's going, how it's going to be moving forward. Um, with the provisions of staff where it references, um, the digital literacy, like, we don't know what that number is gonna be yet, so. If it ends up remaining the same, then I'll switch it back to that, and if not, then we'll make sure that it, that it reflects, yeah. Um, student educator ratios. So next one's three oh six fourteen.
Three oh thirteen.
And this was the point of, um, educator being defined, um, and including paraprofessionals, um.
So the current term, the current rules to the educator ratio is that, I mean, that's, isn't that phrase already in the current rule?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So, we would need to maybe amend that, just to make clear that we're not saying, you can say para in front of a class.
Well, I think that in order to be in front of a classroom, the person would have to at least have a certificate of eligibility, so they couldn't be simply a para. I don't think, so I actually think this is like, it doesn't actually, it, it's creating a problem that doesn't actually exist under the rules, because either you're going to have a license, or you're going to be credentialed. And the way you're going to be credentialed, which is going to give you the right to teach, is, and accounted as an educator under the rules, is, is going to have that certificate of eligibility.
I think it works, I, I think it works too, um, just given the.
I think this is, yeah, I don't think this is cra- I, I, I don't see that this.
It's made so much time on it.
Yeah, yeah, we get it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't see that there's actual problems here where we're, where we're going to be concerned that there's a paraprofessional in a classroom that doesn't meet another requirement under the five hundred rules for being counted as an educator.
Right. If we do find that that's a problem, we can go back and fix it. But certainly that's not our intention to put unclouded people in front of classrooms, and I don't think this does that, but.
Well, and it also says that, you know, it's based on each learning opportunity, based on content, instructional method, and characteristics of learners, and so that kind of covers who's, I think, is going to be in, in front of the students.
You also, right, because there are all other, there are other licensing and credential qualifications that go into, that regulate who you can put in front of that classroom. So, we can't simply put somebody who's defined as an educator broadly, we can't put a nurse in front of that classroom, right, if they don't have the credentials to be in front of that classroom. So, okay. All right.
Three oh six eighteen is remote learning, um.
I would change that.
What?
I would change that.
I, I mean, this is a discussion before, yes.
We discussed that before. Yeah. I like that.
Um, okay, three oh six twenty-one, part B, just getting a second to get there, it's, maybe you all have already gotten there.
Starts on page nineteen.
Yeah, me's on twenty.
Uh, the local school board shall adopt for each school offering kindergarten and kindergarten curriculum in compliance with one nine three two A, Roman roll two A that supports, and then it gives along those things that it supports.
It's all directly from the statute, um, the statute actually doesn't mention any sort of math at the kindergarten level, it goes through this list, and it talks about, um, um, reading, but it doesn't mention that, so, um. So that, that's the context of, of why it's there or why it's missing.
We'd like to, we just follow the legislature's, like, the laws.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and does it?
Don't disagree with Christine on that subject, um, but if we're, if we're.
Yeah, but we can add, are we tied by the legislature or can we add that? It's a lawyer.
If we add that, we will be exceeding in our authority, uh, but making sure that they did something that wasn't spelled out.
I think that's, we're trying to keep fidelity to the statute at this point.
We can certainly bring somebody to the legislature and ask them to, yeah, because I don't think, I, I agree, that math is important.
But a lot of episodes on like science of reading, right, and I think very much.
Yeah, so, but math is coming out fast, so.
Yeah, besides math, it's gonna be.
Well, and also just keep in mind that it says the local school board shall adopt a curriculum that supports these things. There's nothing that says here that they can't teach something in addition. Like, they, they can't use math, that they couldn't, it doesn't say that they can't count and start using building blocks and talk about math concepts, it just says you have to do these things. And in fact, lining up kindergartners and counting them off is a math concept, that you're using every single day in a kindergarten classroom. So this is sort of like, it's the baseline, it doesn't prohibit a school from offering early numeri, numerance? Numeracy constant, seven skills, it doesn't prohibit that, it just keeps fidelity to the statute.
I'm all about fidelity to the statute, but, um, like, Commissioner suggested, maybe we can talk to the friends of the legislature about how would that, that statute to.
We'll tap the legislator behind you here, cookie's listening, writing that one down.
Yeah, Dave.
I'm on it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I think, I think that'd be one you would support.
Just really gotta have a point of order here, you are in conflict right here, because you also have a fidelity to your state academic standards. And as a curriculum director, I constantly hear from my preschool teachers and my kindergarten teachers, Christine, I don't gotta do math, because, yes, it exists in my early childhood. We have numeracy early childhood indicators as state approved standards, and we have the Common Core Math Approved, which has kindergarten standards in it. I get that we want to be faithful to the RSA, but I think you also want to have fidelity to your state academic standards, so.
So, so this doesn't obviate those academic standards, those academic standards in place and they exist, and you're required to follow those, right? But we're, this is a separate thing.
But the conflict here is you've got rules that are absence of anything around mathematical, but yet we have standards saying do it.
There's not a conflict, Christine, they, they just don't, so, but standards have to be followed, you have to do that, the rules don't preclude you from doing that, they allow you to do that.
I, I think you're opening up a great area where you can have, you can have programs saying, I'm not doing early, early numeracy.
Well, then they're not following the standards.
But they're not following the standards, they're in violation of the standards. That's, that's, um, and obviously incorrect on their part. I mean, I would love to write this in here, I think you're right, I would like to write this in here. We are constantly being guided to not overstep what the legislature has told us, remember, is it like that?
Yeah, but, Mr. Chair, and I don't mean to, to be out of order on this, but following what, what Ms. Danning, uh, was saying.
I, I appreciate.
I, I've, I've, I've heard obviously this board and the commissioner talk about fidelity to the statutes, fidelity to the, to the state law. And, uh, and I think consistent with my comments earlier, I believe there has not been fidelity to the statute as far as this process is.
Okay.
And, no, no, and I, I, but I just.
I asked you to, I asked you to comment on this particular thing.
No, no, and, I am gonna, I'm gonna get right to, I'm gonna get right, right, right to that, thank you.
Gotcha.
So, so I do believe that the, that the changes to, the proposed changes to the three oh six rules do in fact touch on, on academic standards. And, um, and that's something that, um, that if we want to be consistent with, uh, with what the legislative intent was for this body, for the State Board of Education, that, um, that, that we need to follow.
You're not addressing the question I asked you to address, um, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, just not a problem here. Yeah, I know, I know, we just was at, being courteous and asking for some feedback here, which we did not receive, so.
I don't think it's, so, so the conflict coming, like, I'm not sure it's a conflict, what it creates is like confusion in the guidance, if they're a local school and they're like, the standards say I have to do this, but three oh six is a, I don't have to teach math, like, what do I do? It's confusing, right, which, which to me, I think it is, goes back to, I believe the law, like, how do we get the law changed to be?
So we have an issue where the statutory requirements don't quite overlap with academic standards. That question, I think, for, uh, our two, uh, experts here is, you think, if, if, because I'm sympathetic to Christine's point here, I totally am, I would love to do that. Do you think Jelcar would object if we write that in, if, if, and would say, well, the statute doesn't actually include that exact language, so you can't do it. We just want to make sure we can get these through. I think it would be totally fine, I would love to see that written in here, I have no objection to it. Does the absence of that language in the statute preclude us from having it, is what I, how I would say.
So, if I were in front of Jelcar and I needed to defend adding that language, I think, being on the spot, um, the argument that I would probably start with is. If I look at three oh six twenty-one A, that the, we've already said the local school board shall require that the school, there is an elementary school curriculum aligned to the state academic standards. So we are referring to the state academic standards, math is there, so therefore, if adding that level of specificity doesn't actually change the, the, the rule at all. I kind of argue, I mean, we talked about things being redundant, I think adding it is a little bit redundant, but I think I could probably, uh, make that. Argument in front of Jelcar for why it was within the state boards will make it authority to add those words if the state board chose.
Cause A says one can take grades one through eight, and then B is where kindergarten is specific, and then that's being added specifically to kindergarten.
Yeah. I, I, again, I, I think, I would like to add it, like, if we can, because I think it's helpful in solving a problem that Christine has identified with people getting confused here. But if you think Jelcar's gonna say you can't do that, but.
Is there a risk, is there an actual risk that someone's not gonna teach mathematics in kindergarten because we don't have that?
According to Christine, there is, she says it's happening now.
Oh, yeah.
But, and that's, that's kind of alarming to me.
All due respect, if I go to the academic standards that are on our website, um, the first thing I run into, I'm doing the standards for mathematical content on page nine, on kindergarten standards. So I, I don't know how a school could, or a school district could believe that they don't have to teach math concepts for kindergartners. So I, I don't know how a school could, or a school district could believe that they don't have to teach math concepts for kindergartners based upon our academic standards and state law.
And we're happy to bring this back to the legislature to try and correct, I hope so.
So I have another question following on this conversation in paragraph A, where, why do we say grades one through eight when literally it's the first board went under kindergarten to eighth school first?
Because that's B.
B is kindergarten.
A is one through eight, and then B is kindergarten.
Oh, got it.
That's how it's set. Just that's on the statute, it's just a separate kindergarten statute.
So, could we mirror the language of aligns to the state academic standards that we use in A in paragraph B, so that it is local school board shall adopt for each school offering kindergarten curriculum that complies with ours, and aligns to state academic standards?
Right, in compliance with other, right, I see what you're saying, and align to academic...
I actually had the same thought, Phil, as you, right, yeah.
Oh, I like that.
I like it too.
I like it, it's very good. Row clock twice a day.
I'm down for the day.
Yeah, she was pointing that out, I was...
All right, next.
Uh, same section, part D. And that's a matter of interpretation, so I think that too. I believe so. Does everyone have a copy of what Christine gave, otherwise I can read what her...
Yeah, she does.
Okay, I didn't wanna read it to you without knowing you all had a copy of the document.
So, part, what page is part D?
Um, it's on page twenty-three, two. It's outlined in 306-22.
Wherever you get them, right, competencies are competencies.
Wherever the competencies are obtained and in whatever subject matter.
I understood that to be, but I wanted to make sure that we all...
Yeah, that, that, that's, I think I'm fair reading. That's good. 306-22, high school first.
Um, so this first part talks about the order in two and three, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, it's just a quick change and it kind of adds some, um, uh, continuity between, because it jumps DLOs and has another one that jumps back, so I think just switching to two and three makes sense in terms of continuity.
Can you drop down that middle section regarding, um, the program of studies?
Well, there's a, there's a comment about moving Q as well.
Oh, um... I was looking through the entire piece and it refers to program of studies throughout, we did move a few things around already, so I mean, it's... And, and part of this comes from how we, in the, in the initial proposal, kind of shifted from not doing the forty-three courses to doing it, so we ended up taking out the table and so, kind of the order of how things were was based on that, and so...
I mean, the current order highlights the comment in the middle, which is the twenty credits versus forty-three courses.
Yeah, and I think, do we need to make clear there, I reference to Q, that the, uh, program of studies encompasses those forty-three required courses, right? As your program of studies, not necessarily your graduation credits, it's your, it's everything you offer, so I think there probably should be, with what we're using, some reference there to that. So where do you suggest? Uh, well, so if we look at, I'm trying to follow here, it's, it's 306, it's on Q, yeah, no, I'm looking at 306, that, two, two, C. One, said, mentions the program of studies. One, that, yeah, Crayton content shall apply, the program of studies shall include learning opportunities for students to graduate, which is 306. One, or table 306, two. So 306, one, would that be, I'm not sure what that references to.
Um, graduation, yes.
Graduation, three months, right, so.
Yes.
So would we need there? Because I think, I think she's suggesting that suggests that you only have to have those twenty graduation credits for your program of studies, which is not what we're trying to do. But we're not saying that was suggesting that you have to have forty-three credits on Q, right? So that's the conflict that we're trying to deal with. Yeah, yeah, shall include those learning opportunities, one, two, learning opportunities, shall be planned. So you gotta have everything in 306, and then Q says you gotta offer forty-three credits across these things, we're not allowing them to distribute those. Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure that, because if she thought it was confusing, yes, I'm weird, it's placed, somebody else will... Somebody else might.
I mean, if Q is really bringing specificity to the required program of studies, it feels like 306, two, two, C, one, which says what the program of studies shall include, like, some paragraphs of that, which could be what is in Q now, which is creating more detail to the program of studies.
Yeah, I think the issue is, Q is just way far down, when you're doing, when you're reading about it.
Sequentially.
Sequentially, so if you only, if you haven't gotten to Q yet, you're thinking, oh, it only includes these twenty graduation departments. I don't think it necessarily has to be changed because it's there.
Actually, it belongs in both places, and here's why. C is talking about content areas.
Yeah.
And the content areas, the curriculum content areas have to align with the program of studies.
Yeah.
Yes. And then we have a whole other section that talks about what has to be in the program of studies, which is, the purpose of a program of studies, if you've got a high school kid, is you pull that out when they're a freshman and you start to like plot what they're going to experience during their high school years. And so that's like, it's the guide for students to high school and graduation. And that's different, and I think that's what Q is trying to do, is to make sure that that document that the kiddos get when they start high school is a comprehensive document that locks that path. C just says, your program of studies has to align with your curriculum.
Yeah.
They're both talking about the program of studies, but they're talking about it for different reasons.
Exactly. But I think what Christine's saying is, when you start to read through here, you don't get to Q until way later, so it gives the impression, until, before you get to Q, it gives the impression that Q doesn't really exist. I'm not sure if it's...
I'm not incorporating my reference to Q, but...
Maybe, um, I don't wanna create any difference in reading, right, because you, you're basically, you have C and then it's, and C one, and then it's laying out the aspects of C one, and then if there's...
Or at the other, that you say C, something, something to Q.
What if it said some, I'm just throwing this out there for a conversation, what if it said something like, the program of studies...
What are you referring to right now, Mr. Chair?
Uh, so C, C one.
C, okay.
The program of studies compl- that complies with, uh, discuss the...
You want to say like, uh...
What?
The program of studies as referenced in Q below shall include...
Right, exactly, as...
As detailed as you can.
As, as comprehensively, you know, something like that, right?
Outlining.
As outlined in Q below.
Yeah.
That makes a reference to Q.
Okay. Administratively, that makes...
Is that easier?
Yes, then moving to Q, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I, I don't wanna move Q, I like, it's, it's fair, but, um, I just incorporates a reference so people understand. It looks fair, you can just look if they want.
Go down to Q, yeah.
So, I mean, so the reference to Q, like, yeah, I think it would left with that middle paragraph comment of like, the confusion, I would clarify, when it goes from twenty credits to forty-three courses, like, someone would read that away, but not in this case.
Well, I, I think that's the confusion, right, in that, in that middle paragraph.
Because all of a sudden, you're then finding out about the forty-three.
It's the type, right, because you're, you're talking about...
Right. Earlier.
You reference Q earlier, that takes care of that middle paragraph right there. And then, uh, section F.
So I looked at the, um, initial proposal and the original language and the forty, because I added forty-three back in, basically, to reflect all the places it was before. It was not here before.
Okay.
Um, which is why it's not here now, but...
Because I think if you, if you reference it in C one, then you don't need to reference it in F, most likely, right? Because you've already pointed to it. Although, so we say, just to be clear, F says, while at the same time specifying a basic number of courses that each high school shall offer, well, we're telling them what they could number of courses in Q that they have to offer.
I'll say one.
If they want to offer more than that. Oh, okay, right. Um, so specifying a basic number of courses that each high school shall offer, um... No, Q was in... Not, I mean, Q already is referenced. I know, I just, we're just, I think we're, we're risking some creation of confusion down there, so I'm fine, I'm fine. We're in the wrong. So G, twenty-four.
Yeah, it's right underneath F.
I, I keep believing in Jelcar. Honestly, I can't, I'm nervous, change it, I'm gonna be a lot of reading. I know, we, we've got a lot of, a lot of folks saying this is fine. We do this on the way, and somebody else is going in another direction, and they're not here, this is not public here. I would like to be, yeah.
Okay, I think that seems a lot of the problem.
The difference in K is that it references prior learning opportunities.
Yeah.
They're similar, but I think there's intent there to that.
Yeah, how we keep it?
I like it, the standard one. Yeah, I think it's, it's just trying to shut his thought out, the standard one, it's very important.
All right, are you going down to Q?
Yeah.
Core.
Can I just make a comment on G and K for a second? All I was clearing up on G was what are the mechanisms by which we award credit, right? And it was clear to me that what we're trying to get at is a collection of evidence, right, based on achievement of competencies for an assessment that was locally developed, or an assessment through the state. If K is simply also getting at that, and it's about, um, prior learning opportunities, why not move K into, under G as number four, so it's really clear, these are the four mechanisms by which we can award a credit?
I see.
So then you've got, these four are very clear, collection of a body of evidence, and a locally developed assessment, or a state assessment, if we're missing a local, or prior learning.
Okay.
One of the issues I think we have in the rules right now when it comes to the high school section, and this is why I kind of suggested about consolidating things into like grouping them in categories, is that those rules got revised so many times over the years that pieces and parts existed everywhere. And you had, it was like putting together a puzzle to say, what am I supposed to be doing?
Right, no, and that was a big part of our rewrite here, was...
Yeah.
Was trying to make that easier for folks to follow.
Right, and that's why, that's why I would suggest, if K is about prior learning, great, let's slide it in and make it a fourth condition of awarding a credit.
I'm not sure that, that's consistent with what we've had prior discussions and the reasons why we have one and three, and then why K was separate, so I think G is intended to say, you either have a collection of evidence, you demonstrate competencies or by a, a local assessment, or you demonstrate competencies by a state assessment, those are the three ways. The issue that we, one of the issues that I know we were trying to address in K was local school districts' policies that were basically saying that if a student achieved the competencies before they got to high school, they weren't going to be given credit for it because they weren't given to, to them while they were a ninth grader, they achieved those competencies while they were an eighth grader, and...
I think you're, I'm just trying to circle there, because I think you're correct, I think K will move separately, because K is a how, right? These one, two, and three are here, are the steps for where you're granted, and then K is sort of a addition to that as, as a process. It's not, it's not really the same. So I, I do think it belongs to the middle. It's just, it's, it's kind of explaining one, right?
It is.
An option for one.
An option, an option for one or any of those.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, I, I just kind of tried to remember, we've had so many conversations about some of this, sometimes it's a blur in my brain about like why we did certain things, but as she was talking, I started to remember some of those conversations.
Yeah, I, I think I'm with you on that, I think it's better to stay in the role. What's next?
Q, four. Do we, do we discuss it now? Uh, I thought, yeah, I thought...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was clarifying this.
We didn't work on this.
There was a question out of district. To address this issue.
Yes.
I can find where it was at it.
I believe it's in six, sixteen.
Yeah, mine's a forty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was, yeah, yeah, that's exactly correct, it's the, it was the addition to, of district-based remote learning alternative programs, that we were trying to make sure it was clear.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the way I read this is that it's saying that it is part of your required program, or part of your program of studies, you can't make a student pay more.
That's why I'm at a bad...
You know, I think the conversation of Q, uh... I, that's a, that was a conversation, but I see the point, it was, I didn't really clear it.
Because Jelcar told us. Yeah, so this is just a business education conversation, yeah?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We've gone around and around, so.
Okay, so I'm going to, I think we're moving on to three, so it's like three.
Yeah.
Four, it's forty-eight. Only S. F three D max, I should.
I mean, I, I know these came from Annie, the our math consultant at the department, and she would tell you that those statistical analysis is embedded in these documents.
Those statistics, this is probably covered in D two.
So, we talk about algebraic concepts. Part of her.
It's the computation of concept strategies and procedures.
Yeah, I mean, I think, rather than requiring algebraic concepts, based on the table, which doesn't create confusion at this time.
So it's sort of, so if you, so number two, numerical graphical representation data and logical relational statements.
Yeah, that's great, that's kind of a definition.
Yeah.
So. I think that would be umbrella done. I'm going to have a request out to Annie, and I'll come back to this, I'll get her something to. Yeah, why don't we just move on, and Annie tells us all, we got it. Trust her judgment.
Yeah, the next one is a conversation that we've had, so regarding credits, logic and rhetoric, personal finance.
I, I want to keep these silent, because it's amazing seeing that they're, the legislature has created them separately to highlight that the legislature wants logic and rhetoric. And it's, it's a bullet point that A proposed, and it can be incorporated, but it doesn't, this doesn't say it has to be a standalone course. But you need to get a credit, and it can be, you can work it into another course.
You can really carve it out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the legislature carved that out and wanted to make sure it was incorporated. I would not want to then take that half credit away. Because having the half credit there, I think, makes just crystal clear, you have to measure this, right, you have to teach it and measure it. Yeah, it doesn't have to be done as a standalone, as logic and rhetoric class, that's an option, you could, so we leave it into other courses. You can have the competencies there, but. So.
Well, it's listed as a graduation requirement as half credit, so.
Yes, so you've got, you've got to get that half credit. But to your point, you can do it in an integrated fashion or a standalone fashion, but I think that this part was trying to draw attention to. I mean, the legislature clearly wanted it in there and emphasized that it's something that every graduate would know.
So I think, I mean, if someone, it'll stop quote practical point, but then, so like something about financial literacy as well, right? That one eighty-nine ten literally says it can be integrated into other programs, right? But it's still a requirement, so calling it out as a requirement is necessary. It's just how schools and districts supply these requirements through an integrated fashion.
We like it.
Think about it integrated, yeah.
I would probably change that.
I think next up, we're at three oh six twenty-six.
Yeah.
Page, page thirty-five.
Yeah. So this is a incorporated, that is a statute in practice.
Yeah, but I think that they're kind of different purposes. The three oh six twenty-six was drafted in response to early comments from OLS because there was confusion with the attorneys that were looking at it and I think in the field as well, is what were the differences between the minimum standards for school approval and what the academic standards were, and I think this was trying to make sure that it was clear that the academic standards are not the three oh sixes, the academic standards exist separately and that there's a separate process by which the state board reviews and approves those and that those live in a separate document, actually into several separate documents on our website. So this was just a rule that was like intended to sort of explain like how the state board reviews and adopts those academic standards.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. Again, this, this is, I just think that goes beyond what the section is, this section makes out the process.
Our process, okay.
Yeah, not the local school board's process.
Exactly.
On how they implement them.
June quarter, can I just offer one consideration for the board that on the credit list?
One more.
Just one.
We're done.
On the credit list for logic and rhetoric and personal finance literacy, would you consider where it says logic and rhetoric, half a credit, put in parentheses, per and cite the RSA? So because it is new, it will point people to that RSA, does that make sense?
Because then, we've got other ones that are per RSAs too, that we don't reference.
It's in the appendix, the appendix serves that purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it in that, in that list.
Okay. All right.
All right.
I think somebody, sometimes we forget, there's an entire appendix for every rule that will lead you back, it says our.
So I, John, so Christine, thank you so much for all the work you put into this. I really appreciate the work that you did and the feedback that you got, and you just did an amazing job organizing and putting all that stuff together. Even when we didn't necessarily see eye to eye on every single detail, just very appreciative of all the effort you put into this. Okay, we're through this, didn't anybody else have anything on the three oh six? And just to reference Christine's point, I mean, do you want to just make a point, I know Fred's here in the audience, but I just think it's sort of worth undermining, how many years this process took?
So, I mean, I think that we've been at this for about three years. It is the most, you know, open and transparent process in terms of soliciting feedback. We had, you know, whereas most rule proposals have one public hearing, we had, you know, three and four public hearings, we had extended time period, we did an initial introduction, we got some feedback from people that we needed some more work on it. And so we, you know, delayed for a longer period of time, just trying to make sure we heard and got voice from everybody throughout the process. I know that Julie has painstakingly gone through all of the public comment. We spent, you know, a lot of time with Jocar attorneys, just making sure that we had fidelity to the rule, to the law and to the rulemaking process. And I think everybody, all of the organizations, I'm looking out into the audience, we've got the NDA, we've got AFT, I got the superintendents, I got the school board association, everybody has been weighing in on this proposal. And, you know, I think that we should all be proud of this, and essentially what we're doing, and you mentioned that Fred is in the audience, but I mean, like this state embarked on kind of a competency base, you know, recognizing learning in students, not C time, you know, decades ago, and.
Nineteen years.
Yeah. And this work just continues to build on that, to continues to build on a philosophy that local school districts are the ones who should be close to making decisions and helping those students. And so I think in many areas, we've tried not to have a state heavy hand here and create opportunity and flexibility at the local school district for schools to be able to meet the needs of their communities and the children in their communities. And so I think that this is a work that we can all be proud of.
And I think it's also important to note, just to Christine's point that she made earlier, when we were going through, we began the process, I know Fred's team really found this out, but it hit us too, just how disjointed and confusing these rules have become over the years, with having things added to them and added to them and added to them, and there were things you had to jump around from place to place. A big part of the effort was to try to consolidate and streamline and make things easier for educators to understand and to follow. And I think that was just, that took a long time to take things from one place and move them to another place. And some of the confusion and feedback we got is, oh my god, you removed this. It was just, it was moved from this place where it didn't really fit to a place where it fit better. And over the long process, I think there was a gradual understanding of how it backworked. I think these are going to be a big improvement over the current ones in terms of being more aligned to the competency-based concept that is now decades old in nature. I kind of look at the last rules as having been the Prius on our way to getting to the Tesla, you know? We're driving the Tesla now.
Yes.
We're driving the Tesla now, you know, it was a sort of that hybrid of there's a little bit of gas, there's a little bit of, now we're all electric, so it's deep. And so I feel like this has just been a tremendous amount of work, and I want to thank everybody who's been involved constructively in the process. It was a big undertaking. I think it's a really strong document that's going to make things a lot clearer, a lot easier to understand. And I think it's functionally going to work better forward, so. And then another ten years, it will get revised again?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move that the state board of education approve the final proposal for ED three oh six dot zero one dash three oh six dot two six, minimum standards for public school approval.
I would just say, subject to the edits of the process.
Subject to the edits, edits that were made to the document today.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. It's eleven to five, do you need to break?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, six and a half years on the board, there, like I've never seen, had as much conversation about a set of rules. And I know a narrative started around the initial draft proposal that came out, and I have not seen rules, you know, so amended from initial draft proposal based on feedback and conversation that these, so. Whatever people want to say about the initial one, there's been so much collaborative effort to get here, and I.
Amending them all the way up to the last minute. What do you think about taking a break, do you want to take one or go through, just like a five minute break? All right, we'll take a short break.
So if a mentor is assigned by district, they work together to formulate a development plan, the district signs up for the plan, they send it to us, we review it to make sure it's rigorous and meets the standards set for the initial rule. And at that point, if there are deficiencies, it goes back, the comments can be addressed, considered to be sent back and forth. And then finally, once that is accepted, the intern authorization is issued. So that process, like I say, it can take about hours, a day. And we, you know, currently we have about seventeen hundred of these in various stages. So if you think about that over three years, we used to have four hundred over three years, so it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty, tops. Today, you know, I just looked, last year we had seven hundred initial, initial applications for six days. Seventeen, so those are staff members that review that, and they're not, I think it's an important point as well, that these are highly skilled staff members, highly educated, these are not clerks. In fact, every one of our evaluators that works on this, it's a master's degree or higher, because they have to understand what, you know, what they're looking at. So, I, I understand it's a big jump in price, but the Bureau of Prudential is self-funded by the fees it charges, it's a normal piece of the legislature. And I would note as well that if you look at other licenses in other disciplines, nurses, for example, or electricians or other professions, there are significant costs there as well. So, and then lastly, I would note that although our price may seem a big jump, if you look around the country, our price is not up one, and I would note that our response time is quicker than our PMS. For example, our surrounding states, this process can take months to play out, with us it takes days. So, we process applications as fast as we can so that people can move on with their jobs. Whereas I spoke earlier this year to an educator who got here from Georgia, it took her nine months to get licensed in Georgia, and here it took two years. So, and, you know, it's not optimal, I'd love to not have to raise the fee. We were able to lower the fee several years ago, some of you may remember when we were here at the time. But, relation goes up, the nature of the applications changes. And, you know, compared to a college degree and going through an ed prep program, this is very cost effective.
Right.
So I think that's a final point, and if went back ten years ago, the majority of new applicants, new entrants into the profession came through an approved program. Which means, if your credentialing just accepts a recommendation from the college and they license it, not a lot of work. And now that's not always the case.
I, I like your inference that the individual who's taking this, this route doesn't have the expense of someone who went to a teaching college and, and they also potentially have the means to work while they do this, so they have. But it still drives home for me the, the reality that the income that person will make versus what an electrician might make is considerably different, and this is, this is really an out there question, but are there potentially? And this is, this is really an out there question, but are there potentially federal grants that might subsidize some of the cost? And is that something the department can offer on a per individual scholarship basis? I don't know if those.
We could look into that, absolutely.
Just to defray that, because there will obviously be some folks who will, okay, you know, they can, they can, then there will be others that it's going to be the roadblock to doing this.
Are districts sometimes covering?
That's a great question. I've been, several superintendents have mentioned to me that they expect in their next collective bargaining session to be adding in this fee in something that they would cover, because they want it to be.
Also, critical shortage areas, I question all the more reasons to try to.
So I, I think we'll see more of a shift there. It's also important to note that we just repealed the emergency authorization, which had a fee associated with it. So, yes, although this particular population will see increase, there are other areas where we're always looking to.
I think it's important to consider as well, too, like, in other words, as his, you know, division is funded by the fees from the educators, we're not charging them here, somebody else is paying the cost of those efforts. And it's other educators who are absorbing the actual cost associated with that. So we're trying to make sure that we're balancing the fees to reflect the level of effort.
All right, so you do a slide?
Yes, I would like to propose a motion to adopt ED 507 dot O2 and ED 507 dot O3 and ED 507 dot 11 and ED 504 dot 08 dash 504 dot 10 and ED 505 dot 09 and ED 507 dot 09 as the slate.
Second. All right, thanks, guys. Okay, hearings, we have students from the New York School District. We had no oral argument by the parties presented here, but do we have the parties here? Do we have the parents? I didn't know if they, sometimes they say they're not going to show up, so. Okay, we don't have that. So there's no need to go into non-public session for this. Any discussion of this issue? Like a hearing officer's report, one of those.
Should we vote to not quite give the appeal? It does not prevent parents from potentially taking new information that had come up since the original local hearing and bringing that forward again to their local board, which should not let any information come.
Yeah, there's a timeframe on that, too. I think it's 14 days.
14 minutes.
But they still have an avenue to refile at the local school board.
Allowing new information, maybe within the first hearing to come forward.
All right, I move that the State Department accepts the hearing officer's report and adopts the hearing officer's recommendation.
Second. Paul Fair.
Aye.
All right. No vote here on summary of cases. CTE, Laura, is she there?
Who I can make just.
There.
At least somewhere.
Okay, Riviera. Basic extension request?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Laura Stone King, Administrator for the Bureau of Educator Preparation and Higher Education. To my left is Dr. John Gleason, who is the Dean of Division of Education. And to his left, Dr. Diane Monaco, who's the Program Director for Educator Preparation Programs at Riviera University. So this is twofold. They have several programs in which are being eliminated. And as part of the elimination, you rewind to last summer, we updated our administrative rules to make sure that we included teach-out plans that affected any candidates enrolled in the program to ensure that there was a pathway and a plan to make sure that they weren't, you know, hung out for lack of a better term. So now, when there are closures with programs that have candidates in them, what we've been trying to do is work with the institution in identifying all the enrolled candidates and to make sure that we document and have a clear either teach-out plan or a teach-out agreement if it has to see past what the institution can offer. And so I've been working with Diane in identifying the students, the candidates. And Diane and her colleagues will submit detailed, you know, coursework that's still left to be done, any identifying needs that the candidate may have, whether testing is required or not for that institution, so that we can document it in the candidate's file, should anything pop up down the road. So the extension really addresses of the programs that are being closed, the particular programs that had candidates in them to not only ensure that there's sufficient time beyond the program expiration, but also adds a little buffer should a candidate have, you know, a medical emergency and hesitate a semester off, et cetera. So it does provide that, that buffer in allowing and making sure that every single candidate is accounted for. And that's what you see on that, that last page, this is the chart, are the identified candidates. And we have the names of who that is and what the extensions are needed. But Riviera can speak to specifics about their programs, the closures and the extension.
I think it was all fairly well explained in the pair of, so. Does that kind of the issue that I had, anything else?
I aimed to make it easy.
You did.
Thank you. And I move that the State Department of Education approve the extension of the corresponding endorsement date of the above six tests to allow for a third teach-out plan prior to elimination of the programs.
Second. Paul Fair.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, you didn't, now you should say everything.
I learned a lot.
As always.
This is a master class in not political.
Thank you.
Here's that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good morning. Steve Appley, Division Director of Educator Support and Education, joined by Bill Watts, lead educator and extreme subject matter expert from the Bureau of Educational and Self-Funding, and very often the brains behind the operation. So, we have before you a proposal to add another testing vendor for certification, credentialing testing. Bill has spearheaded that project and worked tirelessly with the vendor over the last year, two years. The vendor has mapped all of their exams to our competencies for our endorsements, and the vendor being Pearson. And so what we've done is you have a series of motions in front of me, but I want to give some background to it and then Bill's here to answer any technical questions. Currently, we, our primary vendor is ETS. And ETS covers maybe half of our endorsements, or less than half of our endorsements with an exam. So many of our endorsements don't have an exam. So that's one piece that Pearson brings to the table is they cover all but four, five, very small endorsements. For example, SAFE. They don't have an exam, okay? But they cover areas, administrative areas, special ed. So Pearson has this whole list of tests now, but we'll be able to take advantage of in the Bureau of Educational, which we're very excited about. Two, Pearson's tests are on balance cheaper than ETS's, which we like. Three, Pearson offers, we ran into situations where candidates can't pass a test in the first or second try after the third try. Those exams retakes will be free. So that's a nice little thing.
And is that only with Pearson?
And with Pearson.
So, for example, so because it covers so many different, right, so you might have some licensing areas that don't have a pass and exam. They're able to take a test. They struggle with it a couple of times. We've had cases where teachers take it three, four times and five times to pass it. After that, or how many fees for the practices versus Pearson, are they the same for taking it? Is there difference? I don't.
There'll be, for, for many of the tests, they'll be actually slightly lower than the, than the ETS test. Additionally, there'll be a lot more test centers at which they can take a test. So we won't have to have somebody coming from the extreme northern part of the state down to Concord, for example, to take the test. So, travel costs and, and time out of work, et cetera, will be enhanced as well. Pearson has, has begun work to establish at least one test center in the far northern part of the state, one over in Keene, in the far western part of the state. So the costs to the, to the applicant should be lower, you know, overall.
Yeah.
I have a question, Steve, for the specialties that didn't have a test, didn't have a praxis test, and for individuals who are in the pipeline of getting that certification. And now we have a test. What options do they have when they started this journey and there wasn't a test and now there's a test?
So we've established a start date, a year in the future. So those that are in the pipeline now will have a year to get themselves geared up and prepped for a test. And remember, regardless of the pathway they're following, they're all held to the same set of standards, right? So theoretically, the plan they've established should already prepare them for the content knowledge test. But, but because we don't have a test, we don't know for sure that that's actually happening. This will allow us to have greater confidence in, in that, you know, Steve talked about the pipeline of site-based licensing. Right now, we have 999 people on an intern authorization. A good chunk of those, there, there will be no test at the other end, so we are only believing that they meet the content knowledge requirement. We don't have any documentation to that effect. And, and I think I would also note that, yeah, we're, we're looking at adopting these a year from now for those endorsements that don't have the test today. So they'd have a year to prepare, or they'd have the year to get licensed before the test goes into effect. And once they get fully licensed, you know, we don't go backtrack and say, oh, we got a certificate. So they would have that option as well. If you, if you adopt today, tomorrow or by the end of the week, at the very least, we'll be sending out a, an email message to every single one of those folks that is on a pathway for which a license will now be offered, or required, I should say. Giving them plenty of advance notice and suggesting they might want to consider taking that test sometime in the coming year so they either pass it, or they know they need some additional work before the end of their intern authorization comes up.
Thanks a lot. Any other questions, discussion, talks?
Motion? I'm going to use the first possible motion. This is a series of them, unless otherwise instructed. I move that the State Department of Education shall adopt the Pearson Assessions and Acumenic Skills Test consisting of reading, writing, mathematics, subtests, as an additional testing option for candidates seeking an initial teacher or instructional specialist license. The passing score for each of these subtests and their subsequent revisions shall be the national cut score as determined by a formal standard setting process for the subtest. The implementation date for the purpose of licensure shall be for completed applications submitted on or after July 1st, 2025.
Second. Paul Fair. So, all right. Who wrote the motion? We didn't want, we wanted it to be clear, especially in the future, it's going to go back. Clearly is good. Thank you, guys. Okay.
There are more motions.
Sure, four more motions.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's okay. All right, so item three, which is. Oh, I missed two, okay. Oh, I did.
Okay.
Maybe I did. Good, I did the right one, okay. I move that the State Department of Education shall adopt the following Pearson testing option for issuance of the corresponding endorsement. The passing score for each of these tests and their subsequent revisions shall be the national cut score determined by a formal standard setting process for the test. Implementation date for the purpose of licensure shall be for completed applications submitted on or after July 1st, 2025.
Second. Paul Fair.
Aye.
I move that the State Department of Education shall adopt the following test for issuance of the corresponding endorsement. The passing score for each of these tests and their subsequent revisions shall be the national cut score as determined by a formal standard setting process for that test. Implementation for the purpose of licensure shall be for completed applications submitted on or after July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Aye.
I move that the State Department of Education shall adopt the following test for issuance of the corresponding endorsement. The passing score for each of these tests and their subsequent revisions shall be the national cut score determined by a formal standard setting process for the test. Implementation date for the purpose of licensure shall be for completed applications submitted on or after July 1st, 2025. Pearson Foundations of Reading for the Early Childhood Special Education Endorsement. Pearson Foundations of Reading for the Education Keeper Endorsement.
Second. Paul Fair.
Aye.
I move that the State Department of Education shall no longer accept the following test for the performance issuance of the corresponding licensed endorsement. The implementation date for the purpose of licensure shall be for completed applicants submitted on or after July 1st, 2025. Praxis Education for Young Children for the Early Childhood Education Endorsement. Pearson Foundations of Reading for the Reading and Writing Specialist Endorsement.
I have a question on my own. Is there a reason we are no longer taking that Pearson?
Yes, so that test, the Foundations of Reading test, is it, is actually an appropriate test for an elementary classroom teacher or an early childhood teacher. It's not an advanced test, which would be required for a specialist. And, and we've, we've received a lot of pushback from the field, thinking that because we require that test for the specialist, that we're actually over-testing the classroom teacher? In reality, we are under-testing the specialist and we have a specialist test that you've already adopted.
Yeah, thank you. Second. Paul Fair.
Aye.
Thank you, and I just again want to publicly thank Bill for his efforts on this. He's retired, he put all this together, and he's got a binder about five inches thick of messer.
All right, so PSB members, did anybody, I figured we'd give the DSA's a state if you want, if nobody had anything to act on. Particularly the couple of new members.
We're very excited by the new members leaving the classroom teachers, because they struggle to get classroom teachers on the PSB.
I know that.
Do those meetings, thirty days. They, they teach, right? And so we were very happy to see several classroom teachers.
So Steve, one of the applicants, their letter stating their, their interest in serving wasn't included.
Oh. Who's that?
Paul Colman.
Paul has no interest.
No, it's a letter, he must have missed that.
Just so as long as you have it, because it's part of your process.
There was, there was a letter present.
The resume was there, the letter was.
I can. Could be needed.
So say, they, terrorism is like on the drop, it's always crazy. It's such a robust system.
Well, particularly for people who served before. Because it's a, it can be a three-headed wolf, and if they were interested in continuing to choose.
So I'm going to assume that just because half are reappointments and the other are new appointments, I make a motion to approve the reappointment for the 2024 or 2027 term, thank you. Aaron Care, Jenny Lululew, Liberte, Andra Hall, and Tim.
Second. Paul Fair.
Aye.
And I make a motion to approve the appointment.
And I made a motion to approve the appointments for the 2024 or 2027 term for Paul Cohen and Nicole Troyway.
Second. All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, Tal, you're up. I see you back there.
Catch you back.
It's a lot of work.
Hi, Tal Bear with the Charter School Office here at New Hampshire Ed, and if First Academy Charter Public School with an amendment to their charter, at this point, I'll turn it over to Jess Watson.
Hi, I'm Jessica Watson, I'm the Dean of Operations at the Burgess Academy. We are requesting an increase in our student enrollment from three hundred to three hundred and fifty. On July 30th, we actually closed and purchased our building.
Congrats.
Yes, we're very excited. And we, in partnership with the New Hampshire Hifa and Harper One Bank, we were able to make that happen. And by doing so, we're able to expand inside our building over twelve thousand square feet. And so we're asking for an increased enrollment, enrollment at this time to help take students off our waiting list. We have, right now, over one hundred and thirty kids on our waiting list, and so we want to grow over the next couple of years and to fill those seats.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I have a question about that increase in enrollment. How will that, how will you admit students? Is it just affecting your incoming kindergarten class? Is it throughout your population? Where will those new students, where will they find students?
It'll be throughout our population. So this year, we pulled, we're already growing. We are pulling students off our waitlist in first grade, second grade, and third grade. And so next year, we hope to then add fourth and fifth grade and sixth grade, add additional classrooms at those levels. We had, last year, had added an additional kindergarten classroom to help take people off the waitlist. We normally have between sixty and seventy people who enter our lottery for kindergarten, and we have thirty-nine slots.
What, how many kindergartens do you have?
We currently have two kindergarten classrooms of nineteen students each.
And you're currently, the grades after that, it's one through?
Eight.
So you have, okay. And you mentioned, first of all, I love charter schools. If you don't know that, huge charter. You just closed on the new building, and you mentioned twelve thousand square feet. That's not the entire building, or is that the additional space?
Additional space. So we'll be at approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet as a building. The building is over sixty thousand square feet, and we currently have tenants that occupy. And as those tenants leave, we'll then slowly start to move into those spaces as well.
Now, I know we have a budget, and I'm taking a look at that, but you're going to stack up for the additional students?
This year, we have eleven new hires, new positions created at the school, just for the growth that we're doing for this year alone. And then we'll probably add another five positions over the next three years. We'll be just under fifteen employees this year.
If you mind just, not a big litany, or, you know, or whatever, but just, what is the Burgess special sauce? Because I'm from that same area, I'm from Lytham, and I hear a lot of great things about Burgess. So just, just.
Yeah, so the, it's an arts, it's, it wasn't arts academy, arts integrated, now we're theme integrated, but there's still a big focus on art, there's a big focus on music, there's a focus on technology, and really finding what a student is good at, and then, like, feeding into that, right? And if a student is feeling successful in one area, then leverage that into other areas. And so, really, that's, that's.
Growing pretty rapidly, popular school. Why? What is the popularity? I know that you've got certain things off your shoulders. What do you know as well? No, what I ask you is, so what are, what are families seeing, right? So why, why, when they come to you, what do the parents tell you? Is there a reason for choosing?
There's a lot of different reasons. The sense of community is one thing. Aside from the school, even though we're growing, and even with the addition of students, it's still small enough to make the, like, a closer relationship by, by the first month, all the students, they all know me. And so we tend to have a younger acting population, also because we have meeting meetings of all school together, the older kids are role modeling for the younger kids. It keeps them with less, kind of, I would say problematic teammates, because they're held at bay a little bit longer, and that's been to a good time.
So we also have a lot of teacher autonomy. I think that our teachers really feel they can come to us with this amazing crazy idea that nobody, you're never going to do this, and we'll go, okay, let's try it. Why not? We can try that this year and see if it works, or three months, six months, and let's come back and meet again and see if that worked. And if it did, we can roll it out into other classrooms, and if not, what didn't work, and let's tweak it. And we're very flexible that way. And I think parents really like that, too. Parents often come to us with the best ideas about ways in which we can help their children, and we listen to those ideas and implement a lot of them.
In increasing from three hundred to three fifty, you kind of alluded to that, but I want to make sure, that classroom sizes, teacher ratios, that's not going to be impacted negatively?
No, no. The classroom sizes are all going to stay the same. In our, we have some mixed age classrooms and some standalone classrooms. So, for example, our kindergarten and our third grade are standalone, and those are nineteen students with a teacher and a teaching assistant in every classroom. And then our grades one, two, and four, five classrooms are twenty-five students per classroom with a teacher and a full teaching assistant. So the ratios are twelve to one in those classrooms.
My last question. When did you move into the new building?
We have been there since we opened in 2012, and we had leased the building. And last year, we called the owner of the building and said, do you want to sell it to us? So.
Are you on the main, the main?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, so that's the building you, oh, I thought you purchased something and moved away.
No, we bought that building.
Okay, great.
We have been looking for twelve years.
Then I'm going to ask a follow-up.
Yeah.
Sorry, I know this is about the expansion, the kids and everything, main road, the playground, where's your playground?
We were able to, with purchasing the building, fence off our whole side area. So that's all now fenced off. If you drive by, you'll see all safety fencing there, and we did that already, and so, so.
Thank you.
I may have overlooked it, but in your packet, I do get your budgets for this year, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, and the future. I did not see one for prior years, unless it's not something you were asked to provide?
It was not.
So it's, I mean, it's, how, how's your current budget this year compared to next year?
So we have always been very conservative in our budgeting. We, some charter schools budget a deficit, we do not do that. And we also have been fortunate enough that we've never actually needed any type of bridge loan over the summer. We have budgeted and fundraised in a way that we, sustainability is our number one priority, and so we'll continue to do so going forward.
And you're, and you're now landlords, too, right? So you've got extra income from that.
Over two hundred thousand dollars a year in my income will be coming into the school.
I ask every charter school this, but it's not a quiz. You're, what is the, what is, what is the makeup of your board? Because most successful charter schools have a diversity on their board, of people with business acumen, parents, educational, because we have to have that, that business acumen on the board. So my, my quick question is, what's your breakout?
Exactly what you just said. So we have parents, we have community members, we have people in finance, we have a teacher, we have students in marketing. So, you know, we have, we actually have a lot of longevity on our board as well. We have people who have been on the board for five or six years. We have one member who just resigned last night, but has been on for ten years. So we, we have a very strong board, and I feel very supported by our board, and they are, I think they're a model for what a charter school board should be, and I often tell other new charter schools that are starting up to, like, look at our minutes, and look at our makeup, and come watch one of our meetings, because they're, I think that they're a very supportive board, and they know where to step in and where to allow us to be in charge.
I'm fairly local, I may go to one of your schools.
You're more local, yes.
Thank you.
I move that the State Department of Education approves the charter limit request for the Burgess Academy Charter Public School.
Second. All right. Congrats.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
And you're all invited.
Yeah, we're having a party at the end of the month, so we'll send our dedication.
All right, we have Breakthrough Academy. Can they hear?
Yes.
Yeah. This is a newbie, this is another star. Can they introduce, this is Kimberly Morton, Kimberly Randall with Breakthrough Academy Charter Public School, applying for a new charter, and accompanying them is Aiden Lundell with Lundell Accounting Schools. Wonderful. At this point, I'll turn it over to Aiden Kimberly.
Hey, can you tell me a little bit about your stuff? So, hi.
Hey.
So my name is Kimberly Morton, and thank you first for your time, and while you're still listening to our charter proposal. I've been an educator since I was fifteen years old. Hey, that's a little bit young, but I worked at my grandmother's mom's sorority school. And in some capacity since then, I've been teaching in the classroom, I've been a head of two schools, being a tutor or working as a homeschool teacher, is what we're doing right now. So I love working with kids. Little background, I've got a bachelor's in English, and I got my master's at Southern New Hampshire in curriculum, and I am working on my research stage of my PhD with Southern New Hampshire University, so I'm almost there. I moved to the Mount Washington Valley area, actually, in the main, six years ago from California, so big transplant, huge changes. And so I started teaching at a local small charter school in New Hampshire here for four years, and then for two years now, we've been co-teaching together as a local post school. We've, I've got twenty kids, kind of a school setting, we don't do it at home, it's been a lot of fun. And in addition to that, I own and help operate a restaurant. So I did take a ten-year hiatus from teaching, at which point I worked as an inside sales manager for a multi-million dollar company, and I did that for ten years, and I just wanted to be back in the classroom. So my name is Kimberly as well, Kimberly Randall. So I've been a teacher for the past nine years, I have my bachelor's in biology and chemistry. I started teaching seventh grade science in a large district in western Massachusetts. I relocated to New Hampshire about four years ago, like during COVID, to be closer to my sister and her family, she's got eight kids, so. So when I accepted my new teaching position, it was a multi-grade level classroom, which was very different for me. But Kimberly, I met Kimberly there, and she became my teacher mentor. But prior to teaching, I spent ten years in restaurant management, so I also have a culinary arts and hospitality degree from La Corte and Booth in Boston. So I have experience working in kitchens, but most of my career in hospitality was in management. So I've managed kitchens, front a house, I've been a general manager, so I have a lot of experience doing that as well. But it, so both working in a restaurant and in the classroom, they're both very different, but my experience, I think, was better in the classroom because I spent so much time working in the hospitality industry. So a common theme that I found in both careers was that my students and trainees learned best, and retained more information through hands-on practice, direct application skills, teamwork, and constructive feedback. So I see most academics successful with my students when I brought that to my classroom. I also see significantly more client and motivation from them, which can be very tricky, especially for middle school students. So as I continued working with Kimberly, we discovered that we actually had a similar vision of an ideal school environment, one in which children could spend more time learning through experience and real-world application. And that vision sort of developed further, as we really wanted to hear it, towards the children in our local communities, the community of people. So COVID-19, of course, opened a lot of educators, I took a lot of things, and the two things that came and stood out to us really as a need would be food insecurity, with a lack of healthy food for these students. And then the other area of concern that we saw in general with that was the lack of student engagement and motivation. And even once we entered back into the classroom, that lack of motivation and engagement, I think, carried on more prevalently because they were so used to being at home and doing things differently, that when they came back into the classroom, it was just really hard for them to become engaged again. So those were the two things that we saw as really big needs and our concern, you know, in our immediate area. And so the idea for us doing Breakthrough Academy really stemmed from those two big needs. So we decided to blend and merge a competency-based program with an agriculture program, and it's really what seemed to be what our area needed where we're at. So watching students in four-H programs, you know, transforming the lives of these kids, not just in an academic sense, but, you know, taking a timid child and putting them into a four-H environment, being able to work with farm animals, and then having all that research and learning about the animals, and then being able to go speak to people about it, right? And to have the ability to do that and to build their confidence in other ways really plays a part than in what they take back to the classroom with them. So we've, I've seen children thrive in competency-based programs, mastery programs, so blending the two concepts together, really having them with transferable skills was something we wanted to do when we, when we came up with this concept. So the United States Department of Education says that competency-based provides students with personalized learning opportunities, flexible means of earning credits, leading to better student engagement and outcome. And so our concept will be to have dynamic learning pods spanning three grade levels in the elementary area, and then in, in the middle school also, and then spanning two grade levels in the high school, so no single grades standalone. And so the learning environment is embedded in the belief that experience is necessary for knowledge and in understanding that learning is a process that is formed and reformed, and it's not fixed. So we want to provide those dynamic learning pods inside the classroom with an experiential farm-based program outside of the classroom, helping to empower students to make important decisions about their own learning experiences, providing assessments that are meaningful and relevant to them, naturally enabling an environment to provide differentiated support with the students as well, allowing them to progress at a mastery level and not just focusing on the seat time that they have. So allowing the school itself to provide rigorous common expectations that are explicit and transformative for the kids. So our students are going to learn about gardening, and produce, cultivating, harvesting, utilizing both vegetation and livestock. A large plan we have is to partner with local four-H, FFA programs, tractor supply, John Deere, you know, things like that, motivating students to participate in projects outside of school hours, and then to work with local farms, farm stands, farmers' markets, teach on value, scale and marketing, farm-to-table, benefiting healthy nutrition. We would love, you know, we've talked about the concept of being able to offer the food produced at school back to local families at, like, a donation basis, or to even just be giving it to families that are in such need and need, and to be able to also help with that food insecurity at home and not just at school, so minimizing that and helping students have healthier choices. Having students work with animals gives them, like, ongoing long-term projects. It's not as if we're just, this is a project and it's going to last us three months, right? And a cow is going to take you a year and a half to raise and do something with, you know, if you're going to auction it at the fair. So that motivation piece with having kids work with animals like that, I think, will keep them motivated and in school during school time and off school hours, right? Being able to have access to the campus during the summer to work their farm project, but it also brings them back the next year. it also brings them back the next year because they're still working this farm project and this animal project that they're like, you know, definitely invested in. All the while of creating a community within the school, within the neighborhood, you know, um, kids having that community together, but a sense of a place where they can go and be and have something that they're proud of to do. Hands-on learning opportunities. So uh, I just feel that blending both of those programs is really going to be super beneficial to the students.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, yeah. First of all, thank you for uh, wanting to start a charter school, offering choice and being so passionate about it. A couple of the things that you mentioned that I really liked, one of which is that you've got outside of education experience as well as education experience, so you can bring that outside perspective into a charter school, which I know from personal experience is a school, but it's also a bit of a business as well. And being a business, longevity, sustainability, that's huge because we want to take care of those little kiddos for a long time and you've got to keep, you've got to keep the school. How many, I, I, I looked at some of the enrollment figures, it seems like enrollment projections are relatively conservative.
Yes.
You're staffing uh, in the budget, it, how, how many staff will you have throughout that time? Because the staffing budget seems low.
I think initially the staffing budget is low because it's a conservative starting number, right? And I, initially, the first year, all can change when we do enrollment, but the, the first year initially would be, I would want to um, train somebody in the classroom to co-teach and, you know, take on other responsibilities. So I think that feeds to that low staffing budget on that. But I don't think it's necessary to have a plethora of teachers that aren't going to be utilized for what they're used for, right? So if we have the smaller sized classrooms, I need one teacher for a kindergarten through second grade classroom, I don't need three teachers.
No, totally good, I, I, I think I saw it was maybe a hundred thousand dollars in there, so that seems relatively light. Two teachers maybe, or? And, and by the way, Caitlin Bundell, Bundell Accounting, if you've got them on your side, that's a nice one. They, they, they are very well-known in the charter school community.
Yeah.
They entertain, does great job, so if they advise me.
We're super, super excited with them.
But I, I guess my, my, my whole point comes around, smaller charter schools having more difficult time, but, and I don't mean to say bigger is better, I'm not saying that at all, but the more revenue coming in, you're working on far less revenue.
Right.
And you've got to make more happen with less. So that, that's a challenge.
I think we wanted to be conservative in the beginning. We didn't want to have a large number of an expected enrollment that we couldn't meet. And it makes sense to have a conservative first-year number. And if I had to call Tal and say, wait a minute, I have thirty more kids wanting to do this than what I expected, is that okay for us to run with, to be able to do that?
I'd, I'd say from, I don't know, you're by far the expert in this board of charters that was sitting here and having seen like the ones that run the challenges, it's when there's too aggressive initial, like there's high in the sky estimates into how many students are going to get.
I'm, I'm happy with the conservative numbers, the staff just seems, the staffing projection and the budget just seem a little conservative to, to, to pay for the, I'm seeing the number of years one, two, and three staffing numbers, uh, maybe a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so there's three teachers plus you or yourself, right?
So how much, how much per teacher roughly, when you're talking Caitlin?
Um, about like forty-five thousand per teacher.
Okay, so grand total, three teachers and fifty kids in year one, some estimate like that?
Yeah, fifty-six kids.
And my, and my follow-up question, which I always ask, and I think you might have cheated by listening into what I was saying to the previous group.
Actually, we did.
Okay, actually, board comp, board composition is, is huge in my book and I almost think that we should have something down the line that kind of mandates certain diversity on that level, on the charter school board, where you have some levels of business acumen almost mandated on that board to help out and to guide.
Oh, we are.
As a financial. The most successful charter schools we have seen have board members, staff as well, but board members who are fiscally and financially responsible, that have balanced the, you know, done table.
Right.
Who, who understand the, you know, finance. So you're not saying you want all of that, but you want some of those people, at least two, I would say, that are really financially savvy on your board. Do you have that?
Yes, so we, I mean, of course, we don't have a board yet because we don't have your approval, but we do have um, a few educators that are very invested in what's best for children and not too invested in the school itself to be able to look at it from the outside perspective, so they're not um, they're not local to our area. And then, but we do have a lot of local businesses, we have restaurant owners, hardware store owners, um, we have uh, construction owners, we also, we have 4H leaders, we have all of these people that are definitely saying we want to be part of this and part of your board.
I love it, I, I'd recommend you have all the passion in the world from all the educators and all the, all the parents that want the very best, and you also have that, that little countermeasure, if you will, someone with the, 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 the financial acumen that's just going to be scrutinizing them and making sure that they don't overreach. Now, on your board.
Right, but on our board, yeah.
On your board.
I was going to say the application looks great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I actually called Tal yesterday, um, because I was deeply concerned at how incredibly thorough your application was.
She's an overachiever.
No, it was, it was.
Thank you.
So you guys clearly have planned this out in more detail than the vast majority of applications we've received.
Tal, Tal had high expectations for us, she was very great in helping us like in that direction, with Be Specific.
So you can only imagine where you are on our agenda. And for those of us preparing for this, when we got to your application, I'm like, huh, I have a charter school application, and when I saw charter school and farm, I was like, yes! So it's awesome.
Thank you.
Please, so that's inspired, I, I look forward to many more years of you sharing with us your.
We are excited as well.
It's, it's a really neat, unique concept, but to me, what was really important was just how much plan we clearly had put into it. And I'm with Gem, I've looked at some of your budget numbers and I thought, well, that should be higher there, that should be a little bit lower there, there were adjustments, but there, nothing was ridiculously out of the ballpark. You clearly thought just through, um, but you had a good plan. And it, it looks like you will be able to execute your vision, which is really a lot of what we look for is the ability to execute. So, and I appreciate that you put that this experience and outside of teaching is really helpful.
The other, um, we should check a box was your starting date being a year from now. We've had many applications where they come to us in April and they want to open in September and you have to say no, because, not because you don't believe in what they're doing, but you want to believe in their success. And you're giving yourself enough window that you should get all your ducks in a row.
Alright.
Alright, I move that the State Department of Education approve the charter applications for Breakthrough Academy Charter Public School.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congrats.
Thank you so much.
Congrats guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Can I breathe?
Yes. Good afternoon, can Tony be distributed educational pathways for the department? First item we have up is a Learn Everywhere revision application for Big Brothers Big Sisters of New Hampshire. Today I had Casey, I'll let him introduce himself, he's from Big Brothers Big Sisters and he's been running the program and he can speak to the, the changes that occur that under the new rules did trigger another peer review and another approval by the state.
Hi, I'm Casey Lufflerz, I'm the teacher's head coordinator over at West High School in Manchester, this will be our third year here in the program. We come before you today because we ended our partnership with iMentor effective at the end of June. So by default, we had to come up with a new program name, um, we had to come up with a new platform to utilize for engagement between the pairs, the mentors and the mentees. And with that also, we had to, we ended our partnership with them, we forfeited their curriculum, therefore we kind of had to devise our own curriculum, come up with our own thing, um, very similar to what they're offering, but it's not costing us a lot of money. So um, that's why we're here today, just, that's, that's real, real big changes, um, other than that, nothing else really changed. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks for coming, hate to drag you down here for a change like this, but.
No, I'm done.
Yeah, so anybody have any questions? Great program.
Thank you.
Uh, I move the State Department of Education approve the Big Brothers Big Sisters of New Hampshire Learn Everywhere revised application.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the Codia Flight Academy.
Yeah, Mark Donovan may be on, he was flying, but I can't remember his name.
Do you do the meeting from a draw?
Yeah, hopefully he's here.
And Danielle, who, I've seen her before.
I did.
Hello. Uh, Danielle Henderson, Director of Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics. I am here to fully support Wacoia Flight Academy, KAA Sky Bright, um, not the applicant, state agency.
And uh, I don't know if the board recalls, but when this was initially approved at Academy of Science and Design, the chair gave us why this was not due credits.
I did.
And so Mark did update his application, he provided some justification from, I think, he was a bachelor high school, also has a student, um, not through Learn Everywhere, getting credit in the level, improving their pilot license, getting two credits. So we're back before the board, changing the credit value for completion of not only ground school being one credit, but then the pilot license being additional credit for the full value of two credits, uh, which would just be the remainder of the prior two.
Are these gen, they're both gen ed or is one science?
No, these are open.
Science would be good, science would be good.
Why can't be science?
Come back again.
Yeah. Next time maybe you can do science slash gen.
I move that the State Department of Education approve the Lancomea Flight Academy Sky Bright Aviation Learn Everywhere revised application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mark must still be flying because he declined being given.
Yeah, okay.
So we, can we see another one of you, are you working, you're working on more, right? That gives us two, two in within the Codia.
I, I.
Big D, you know?
Yes, I am keeping Portim here very busy with Aviation Learn Everywhere. We've met with multiple, um, we've actually, I, I, Portim, I dragged him to Hampton Airport so he got to see the beautiful airport, uh, Hampton Airfield, um, we met with them, we've met with Comfort Aviation Services, we've met with numerous.
St. Anselm.
St. Anselm, we've met with numerous summer drone camps, so um.
National, any, if you bring New Nashua sometime?
Yes, yes, yep, we've met with Nashville Community College, um, about theirs and then meeting Tim, they actually had other summer camps that they want, not only their drone camp, but other summer camps that they want to talk to Tim about, Learn Everywhere, so, yeah.
Well, loop me in, next time you go into the airport.
Yes, more.
It's just CCV.
More aviation to come, don't you worry.
Since I saw you last, my daughter was selected for helicopters and she made it out of line.
Oh, that is awesome.
Very exciting.
That is, yeah.
Very terrifying.
Terrifying as a mother, but very exciting for her.
Have you, have you reached out to the Navy for a Learn Everywhere credit? Just say, you know, if we could try to work out.
I could hook you up.
Okay, okay, I'll give you my business card.
Uh, we are working with Civil Air Patrol again as well, so that's ultimately coming forward.
Yes, yeah, like I said, I'm keeping Tim busy in the aviation department, so.
Hey, you know, UNH uh, has a great statement. Yeah, that could, you know, transportation. Hey, I'm all, your train's next.
It's so funny, my division is actually aeronautics rail in transit. So, just saying, just saying, I can be your contractor. Okay, thank you very much, enjoy your day.
Did you get the Airfield Cafe when you went to New Hampshire?
Is it?
Great, great spot.
Okay.
I'll just want to give it to Angela. It's a hand.
I'll just give it to everybody.
Yeah, so we have it in the, in the board for everybody.
Uh, very exciting program, so uh, University of New Hampshire Cooperative Extension through 4H, we're proposing a program and today I have Karen and Wade, and I'll let them introduce themselves and give a little description of the program and answer any questions.
Thank you for having us today, my name's Karen Deegan and I am a youth development professional, working with UNH Cooperative Extension. Today we are proposing a application to allow New Hampshire high school students in the 4H program to get high school credit for a 4H livestock animal science course.
Hey, my name is Wade Weber, I'm the State 4H Program Director, uh, so I work with Karen and it's been a joy to think about our, building upon our historical involvement in New Hampshire communities the last hundred and twenty years through the 4H and extension programs and continuing to give opportunities for young people to have those hands-on learning opportunities, learn by doing is our motto. And uh, for us to have an opportunity with Learn Everywhere to kind of elevate um, and kind of build some rigor around as well, I think coming out of, sort of learning, coming out of COVID, the opportunity as well to continue to enhance that skill development and competency development in the out-of-school kind of learning environment, as well as partnering with our schools, favorite schools, and as we do in cooperative extension, we're just trying to meet families where they're at and help them take those next steps towards those competencies that will help them be contributing members to their community. And uh, so we're really excited about the opportunity here, aligning our standards, you know, with the, uh, the standards that we want to see young people achieving, so, and yet meeting them right where they're at because there's a diversity of animal science programs, uh, it's not just all live, uh, large animals, but it could be a whole variety and diversity of, uh, again, meeting families where they're at and giving them an opportunity to tangibly demonstrate those skills within the context of the positive youth development program that we have as part of the 4H program and UNH as well.
Yes, yes, and I'm just going to add to that, um, our, the students will be working with professionals from UNH Cooperative Extension as well as community members from a particular field. And as a bonus, um, for this program, UNH does offer 4H students, um, five hundred dollars a year scholarship towards off their tuition if they wanted to become a student at UNH. And so over ten years, that's five thousand dollars a year off their, their tuition, which is a really good benefit to New Hampshire youth. And so for youth who are enrolled in this program, they would qualify for that scholarship as well. So are open to any questions, you may have.
Is it a gen ed credit or not gen ed? Is it an elective or is it science?
It's an open elective.
Should be science.
In that way, you know, sci, sci, maybe we can come back and.
Yeah, we could start ourselves.
Could do this, we started as a, as an elective, but some of these things could be, this seems like an obvious, right?
Yeah.
So I know your application was incredibly thorough, because you guys already have a rigorous program, it's just aligning it. So my biggest comment is it's about time. The 4H was one of the first things when we were talking about the beginnings of Learn Everywhere, of brainstorming about, could it be a good program?
As you say, and UNH has a ton of other programs, continue to nag them about, so.
Seriously have other ideas down the pipeline, so, yeah.
Sailing camp.
And what do you, what is the bandwidth of students you can serve in terms of, of how far would they come from to access your program?
Well, a great question, um, you know, uh, because we have, uh, you know, employees in all type counties, so we service the entire state, obviously, um, engaging uh, young people and their families, obviously, where they're at, um, is part of our process, but having that multiple point of contact is very important. But having that multiple point of contact is very important for us going forward. Obviously, also the 4H program has historically, you know, a network of volunteers and community partners that have helped substantiate those things going forward. So this, this first year, you know, as first years and first year in the project, is really building our infrastructure. We, we've got, we've done some pilot focus groups with our existing volunteers, and we're very excited about this possibility. They've been champions for animal science learning, because, you know, animals are always dependent upon somebody showing up, doing the work, those types of things. And also, you know, from the mental health lens, that young people connect with animals in different ways. That actually is now being shown in scientific rigor to actually help young people in their own mental health journeys as well. So we feel like there's that combination of benefit to the economy, but also benefit to the health and wellness of young people. That doing that in the context of what we reinforce all the time within 4H, which is help create a positive, a positive environment for learning, you know, where they're free to fail, you know, and then to recover from that and then continue to be supportive in the community to help elevate that engagement going forward. It's something that we're really excited about and we feel like is also going to be attractive to our community and volunteer partners to go forward. So there's the technical aspect, I think is part of your question, but then there's also the volunteer infrastructure to help kind of elevate that community of support for young people as they think about whatever that career pathway is. Or, I mean, but it could start as like a hobby and intro, I like animal, I like cuddly things, you know, and move into something that becomes even more than they ever thought, I imagine. And that's, that's what we're building here this first year, to build that info for support.
I move State Board of Education to approve the 4H Youth Development Program, UNH Cooperative Extension, Learn Everywhere and UCL Application.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Can you talk to Cooperative Extension about a ecology plan? Parker, I mean, I would love to have something based on trees and plant science. I mean, you've got forest, forest.
Well, I, I can assure you that we are hopeful that this first proof of concept.
You will be seeing us again.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
We're excited about partnerships, so thanks.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
So the next three applicants are new non-public schools. And I don't know if I have a lead or a couple. So Ready, Set, Connect is the first one. In your packet, it describes it as a preliminary approval. Because of the rule change with the three twenty in facilities, I had to give this packet to you guys two weeks ahead of time. As of today, this facility has been approved by the Bureau of School Facilities in Marlin, Austin. And so I provided the chair with an alternative motion, if you're willing, for full, basically full approval because a facility is more approved as of today. And that would give them approval for the five-year period of the center of the region. So I want to introduce myself.
Absolutely, my name is Kristy Campbell. I am the Regional Director at Ready, Set, Connect. I'm also a BCBA. I've been there for about ten years, since I opened since two thousand and eleven. So we serve children with autism up to about the age of fourteen. We're an ABA company right now. What I am seeking for approval for is to change two of our classrooms, or two of our rooms into classrooms. For over five years now, we have schools reach out to us because they are not successful with having students in the classroom in their public schools. So they seek out to us for help. So we just want to make it more available. Um, we just really want to be able to continue to help this population. Three and a half years ago, almost four years ago, we merged with Gershantism, which has schools in New York and Washington State. So it gave us that perfect opportunity, so we have the expertise of the education and also the expertise in the behavior management and really skill development utilizing ABA. So we still want to go, want to focus with ABA to help these kids learn and decrease the behavior so that they can go into the public school and transition back once they're ready. With the classrooms, we're looking at a max of eight in a classroom. A teacher, an assistant teacher, BCBA support, and then one-to-one as necessary. So we want to keep it really small. We're looking to start really small because we do have the other business models that can support it. We want to hire a special education teacher to run the first classroom and just make sure we're able to provide best services for these kids.
What does it really mean for what you do? I have a very thorough question.
Through your experience, what is the length of time you typically have a student before they transition to a public school? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so over the years, the state of New Hampshire has gotten a lot better at diagnosing kids earlier. Before, when I started in this, this was about fifteen years ago, it was like four or five, they were getting diagnosed. Now we're seeing just under two in two years of age. So the kids will come to us typically very intensively. Obviously, our little babies are so cute. They will do, they're approved for thirty to forty hours through returns. And, but if they're still napping and all of those things that they need to do to, for them to grow, they'll come to us like twenty hours and we can have them. When I first started, we really only did early intervention, so up until the age of five, when they had to go off to kindergarten, or first grade if they weren't ready. Since then, we've created social groups for after-school activities. We created life skills program. We actually have three facilities in New Hampshire. We have one in Hilton and one in Manchester. So typically with insurance, they will stay with us full-time up until the age of six, when they have to go to first grade. If they're ready to go off to kindergarten, we happily send them off to kindergarten, then they'll come to us in the afternoon. So Academy, I think the longest was nine years that we have one child with us through the ABA Services Program. We work with the Manchester School District, North Valley, a lot of them who just need extra help. We send in BCBAs, we send in RBTs, they send in to us and we work very closely with the schools.
I, you all might know, I don't know what an ABA is or an RBT is.
So ABA is Applied Behavior Analysis. Like I'm a board-certified behavior analyst. And it's a scientific method used to really teach kids that are neurodiverse skills. And then also, we look at the functions of their behaviors. So a lot of times, kids are, they might engage in behaviors you don't really want to see anymore that are disruptive in a classroom. And really, it's just a form of communication because they don't have the communication skills to be successful to get their needs met. So we'll teach them how, like, communication skills to get their needs met. We work with a very diverse population right now, the full spectrum, which is wonderful, they're a lot of fun. We, so we work with speech to have, we see devices for them. We also have low-tech options for them. An RBT is a Registered Behavioral Technician, and we are all overseen by the BACB, which is our national accreditation. So a Registered Behavioral Technician is a highly skilled, one-to-one direct service staff. So that they know the principles of ABA.
Absolutely. I was listening. I move the State Board to accept the Commissioner of Education's recommendation and provide preliminary, oh, no. I move the State Board to accept the Commissioner of Education's recommendation and provide approval of Ready, Set, Connect for attendance purposes only. The period of this approval shall begin on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and shall not extend past June thirty of two thousand and twenty-nine.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just again, maybe this would be helpful to give you some context in the rush of that before that. But you may even see more of these types of schools coming forward because sometimes we run into a conflict. So you have a child, particularly an autistic child, who is in need of a lot of ABA types of services. And so those are services that might be prescribed by a physician, right? You need to have these services, or you need eight hours of, a day of, you know, behavioral therapy, right? But then there's also, and we have students who are required to have faith by law, right? And so they need to go to faith. And so sometimes these two systems can collect, right? Because the, what happens as well, we've got to have the kid at school, we have to deliver faith for the kid, but simultaneously have a prescription, the kid needs eight hours of services. And then maybe what we do is we try and stack that, starting at three-thirty, you know, we give them four hours of behavioral services at the end of the day, when it's the worst time to do it. And so what happens is it creates a degree of flexibility when you approve an educational program like this. So while the kid's getting his prescribed behavioral therapy to help deal with the autism, they are in approved educational setting, so they can integrate these two activities. And it just makes it a lot easier for families and particularly, you know, sometimes depending upon the nature of the child, it can help the school quite a bit too, because you don't have to be that disruptive student that they're trying to figure out how to. And so you may see more of this kind of a thing happening.
To know that you're taking some, some bit of burden, awkward care to, to the services already.
Sometimes it's tough, yes, yeah. Oh, you have another school.
So Evergreen. Our second school is a preliminary approval, and they've obviously seen full facility approval yet. They're very close, but of course, in time, it did not work out. So it's a preliminary approval, although you have, sorry, Evergreen Elementary and Tiffany and Jay are here today. And so if you have any questions or if you want to do a brief introduction of your new school, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Diamond, I'm the founder and the mastermind behind this plan. It's, as it stands right now, with the way this works, so I rejected it two years ago with an idea. And it's exciting to hear everything everyone's talking about because Evergreen is kind of fusion of all of these things, looking at the whole child and how we can best support their growth, not just academically, but also in the behavioral realm. There's a big psychological component to what we do, and we're looking at the child and what the child's brain is readily available for. And then also where that child is at a baseline. So I have a big background, I just started BCBA talking, in ABA, I have thirteen years' experience in special education. So I'm fusing a big part of that mental health, wellness, and those precipitating factors that, that have to do with the betterment of the child within the educational system, within the family relationship, and bringing the family in, and within their community. And so we have, it's a, it's a, it's a mouthful, but, so we're looking at the child as whole. We're looking at the academics, we're following the state's standards. And I've infused some other pieces within those state standards where there's gap, where there's a need to fill. So you can see that in, in the standards that we've created. But then also, a big part of what we do is looking at life skills, looking at gardening skills, culinary skills, and things that children are interested in at these fundamental ages, where their brains are readily available, and being able to harness those in the moment. So we look at kind of a subsidiary of what you would see in a typical educational entity. And we're infusing all of these life skills practices, mental health, emotional wellbeing, communication, and cognitive functioning, because that's the whole child.
It gets kind of complicated, and if you give them your time today, because every person is different, right? And every brain develops at different times. So starting in at that kindergarten level is so important, right? To help build that foundation of how do you learn, right? And everybody learns a little bit differently, and also how do you prepare that brain to, to learn? You've made it hard for, like, the brain has to be ready to learn before it can learn, right? So Evergreen is also in, in place where we make things comfortable. We're trying to make it more of a homestead, so when kids come in, they're, they're more comfortable. Their brain, when they're more comfortable, it means that the brains are more ready and available to learn. And through that, we're, we want to build the foundation of all of the skills that you need to do when you get older that sometimes we're like, I wish I had, I learned more about this, I wish I knew how to regulate myself at this moment, and I'm a little bit better, but didn't anybody tell me that? So starting a lot of that stuff early on is one of the reasons why we started at, at that lower level. We feel like that's so important, and it gives a lot more opportunity for, for those kiddos to figure out who they are as a learner and how they can manipulate this world that they're going to eventually happen to have.
Yeah, because we look at raising a person, right? They go into school, now after the grade, there's this whole person that you want to send out into the world and do good, be good, and have everything they need to be successful. So that's how we're looking at it, to, to touch on all of the realms of the dynamics of people.
Any questions?
Hi, I love whole child development, I love, I like the approach, like personalized learning, like I think it's fantastic. It's more for us than for them. Yet again, going to the soapbox, I think about like, what is our statutory authority to approve non-public schools? And having to put together a hundred and sixty pages of application feels administratively burdensome for what like our actual authority is for non-public schools, kind of.
Yeah, you guys did a amazing job putting together an application that you, that we didn't need to. Because we have certain parameters.
But that the rules require you to, right? The way it's written.
Right, right. And so, so we appreciate it. Good work. It definitely shows that you have a good vision of the time, and so. It's pretty thorough.
Great approach to it.
Yeah. And any more?
Yes, sir. I move the State Board to accept the Commissioner of Education's recommendation and provide preliminary approval of Evergreen Elementary for attendance purposes only. The period of preliminary approval shall begin on August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and shall not extend past August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good luck, see you in a year.
Very excited, we appreciate it.
Hey, you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Is Dave Tebow available? So our last non-public school, this is a Daisies school in Maria Academy.
That's who he is.
And Dave Tebow is the Superintendent of Schools, I believe is what it's called.
He's the Daisies Superintendent?
Yeah. And again, this is a preliminary approval to one year.
We should be showing up just number two.
And with these two preliminaries, more than likely, I will be back in September with virtually the same packet, but with the somebody approval.
Sure.
Or the full approval for the board.
Hi, everyone, I'm here.
Welcome. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
No.
It's only six hundred and eighty. It's only, yeah, no, but you guys, I mean, it's a good application.
Very good.
Checked all the boxes.
Yeah.
Hey, does anyone have any questions?
I think so.
This is a, in the last eight years, we've been able to open four schools, adding them to our system. This location and, or a middle location, all considered, hoping to have more schools as part of the mission's vision and, and mission to make public education, you know, accessible to folks, you know, around thirty, forty minutes tops to get to a school around the state. So we've been able to open schools up north in our country again. This is, this is a school where, and it's a balancing act between, you know, local communities saying, hey, you know, we really want to, to look at opening a public school. And Northwoods is one of those communities that made sense, tied with the vision and the overarching plan for the Daisies, which is a local state of New Hampshire. So the local community's done a nice job of working with us. And they have the benefit of being part of our system, so they're all the resources that we've provided.
Dave, Dave, one question. I'm familiar with this property. Are you in a community center that's connected to the parking lot for St. Joseph's?
Yeah, one of the reasons why is the great location, the, you know, St. Joe's Church is right there. You've got the community center, which has six open bathrooms right now. It's, you know, you had to do minimal work to get it ready, work on the separate system. It's, you know, you've had to do minimal work to get it ready, work on the separate system. And Marlon's actually right there today, doing the inspection right now. And it, it has, there's already a daycare there as well. So this is an opportunity for us to partner with them and have kind of a one-stop shop for families who need younger care as well.
Thank you.
I move at the State Board, accept the Commissioner of Education's recommendation and provide preliminary approval of Regina and Maria Academy for attendance purposes only. The period of preliminary approval shall begin on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four and shall not extend past August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Same. One favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the, if I read any annual report, do you have a, can I show the visitors? This is just for us.
Karen West, I'm meeting her.
Hey, Smith.
Yep, here's.
Oh, there's Karen.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Hello, how are you?
It's a beautiful report.
I know, rapid design.
Thank you very much. We can have a lot of help on that. So my name is Karen, I'm the chair of the State Advisory Commission. It's my first year as the chair, so it's my first time submitting the annual report. So you have any questions if you have them?
Anybody have any questions? Well, thanks Karen for waiting.
I'm like over there, like, what are they gonna ask? Yeah, it's perfect.
Whenever we have a really great report that's very thorough and detailed, we don't usually get a lot of questions.
Could she, while she's here, just give us a little bit of an overview of what the advisory does?
Sure.
So truly, we advise the Commissioner on the unmet needs of students. We really worked this year with, working with the Commissioner on kind of taking a step back and really working on what our role is with the federal guidelines. So we've had a couple meetings with the Commissioner. We've worked really hard on making sure that we're trying to get our parents involved. We've had a lot of reports coming through from the D R C and the P I C. Just kind of getting ourselves back to that baseline of what our committee should be doing, because I feel like we've been a little unfocused in the years past. So really just focusing on what we need to do as far as the guidelines and just working on that. So we've written nine letters about lawmaking, about some of the laws that came through. We've shown support or our questions, and just basically working on the unmet needs of students through that statement.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. We have a great team, we're very lucky, so.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, me too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember that? It's not two.
It's not two, so.
It's like, yeah, you want to go? Yes. I'm gonna, no, leave or?
We have, we have a lot to sit here.
We have a bunch. Okay.
Yeah, right. I'll best to the Commissioner's office.
Sorry, guys, we should just get a little sooner. Um, so a couple things, so getting ready for back to school, right? It's slowly winding up. I mean, July tends to be very quiet, and in August, it's slowly kind of, you know, gets more and more questions. People reaching out like, oh my gosh, I'm gonna start, what am I gonna do, right? How am I gonna do this? And, uh, which is kind of exciting, and it's fun putting everything back together and seeing people get excited about that. But not wanting to leave this summer either. I actually had an opportunity to visit one of our camps, it's called the Lantern Light Camp, it's over in Northwood this week, this week was today. I don't know if it was last week, I don't know. But I visited the camp, it was awesome. You know, and they, it was, it's part of our Rekindling Curiosity program that, you know, every kid goes to camp. We partner with the Community Behavioral Health Association to help support the kids. And it's just fun getting out there and, and seeing the kids engaged. And it was interesting, because so this particular camp has a full-time therapist that they hire and is on camp site. It's a residential end-of-day camp. And, you know, talking to them, but, you know, one of the things that, that came out, as I pointed out, I'm like, camp is the therapy, right? Like, in other words, the fact that these kids can get out, and they can go swimming, and they can go boating, and they can go run around the woods and, and just be kids, right? Like, like that alone, you know, is therapeutic in my mind and in my perspective. And so it's fun to just watch it kind of unfold that way. So this year, in our third, or is this our third or fourth year of Rekindling? So we distributed a total of one point nine million dollars of scholarships to underprivileged kids across New Hampshire to be able to go to camp. And so these are kids who probably otherwise would not have an opportunity to do something like that. That was done through COVID Cash, which is the next topic that I want to bring up. So that is coming to an end, our E S R COVID Relief Fund, funds, not just, you know, for the Department of Education, but in the state and quite frankly, across the country. September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four is the end of those funds. There will be some very limited tails, you know, relative to some stuff that has started and is wrapping up. There's an extended liquidation period for a very limited number of things that you will see. And so really, you know, as I've expressed to my own team, like, we're gonna be back to normal, right? Like, you know, we're back to working on the things that we know are important for students and children to be successful, and we're gonna focus on those, and all the more reason to stay very focused. We have had a couple of projects that we did with that additional flexibility that we think will continue into the future, and we're gonna continue to advocate for them because they made such a difference. I mean, a good example of that is the work that we did with Discovery Education. Again, so rolling out a, you know, a, a resource tool to our teachers. And as I often say, like, it's hard to get adoption of anything, right? And this is a tool, Discovery Education is used in every school in New Hampshire, right? So clearly, somehow that met a need in a way that I think is important. So we'll be having conversations in this next budget cycle with the legislature about trying to make sure that that can continue. It will continue for the twenty-five, or twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but then we'll be talking to folks about that. You know, as an example. But otherwise, you know, you're seeing that winding down and winding down across the, the country. I think that New Hampshire was spared, most of our districts were spared, the effect. You know, many, in many states, schools use those funds to kind of supplant paying for people and stuff like that that the otherwise couldn't do. And so in other states, you're gonna probably see some substantive, you know, reductions in workforce in some of the schools, just the way that they manage that. Our schools did a much better job with that. We, and you know, there's a lot of emphasis and conversation, like, one-time projects. This is about intervention for students, let's try and keep it there. So it will be some of that, but I don't think it's gonna be at the scale that some other folks are gonna be struggling with. We announced our Teacher of the Year, our finalists. Thank you Christine for that work, another banner year in our Teacher of the Year work. Uh, we've got Chelsea Viera, who teaches a self-contained autism classroom for students to, at grades two through four at Highland Goth School, Alton Falls Elementary School in Manchester. Been teaching for fifteen years. We've got Kristen Daisy, who is a first grade teacher at the Dr. Louis F. Soul School in Salem, and she's been teaching for fifteen years also. We've got Candace De Angelis, who is a Spanish teacher in Bedford High School. She's been teaching for eighteen years. And Brian Gray, who is nominated as a business and technology social studies teacher. At the time, he was at Sandburn, but he's gonna be teaching at Rhode Island Academy of Music Hall. And he's been teaching for sixteen years, so. Excited to see that, and you will get more information as that progresses, and you will be invited to, we, in December.
To a, yeah, to a celebration at.
Yeah, we'll do the celebration, probably in, in Manchester in December, as I hear what we do once you do the announcements.
We're gonna be visiting the schools in September, setting out those dates.
So we released the Input Accountability System Report. I don't know if you all saw that. As you know, school accountability in New Hampshire is based on an input-based system and a performance-based system. You know, we've been working for a number of years to try and update some of that input-based system. We did do that, and essentially, this is a self-attestation by the schools that say, yes, we did everything that we're required to do, right? And so we just published those results. Eighty-seven percent of New Hampshire high schools self-reported that they are fully compliant. Schools are also able to meet that requirement by being N I S C A certified, you know, in the high school level. So they're able to go through that process. We do have a performance-based accountability system. It's, it remains. We've tried for several years to get the federal and the state systems aligned and have it more effective. So far, every time we get to the legislature, it gets derailed, and we're really just trying to normalize some of the, the work. But we'll continue working on that, and you'll be able to see more of that coming through, you know, continuing into the future. And so that, I think, is the main, yeah, those are the issues that we have going on at the department. And I'll take any questions if you guys have issues or questions about stuff.
How much, uh, do you know? How much we have unspent on the district's COVID money?
So I can look it up very quickly, because it's on my website. And you have to be careful, like, with your vernacular in terms of unspent.
Like, uncommitted versus unspent.
Yeah, so what you do is if you go to the department's website and you go to iPlatform, which is, you know, quite frankly, and then you go to iGrant. I don't know if, Angela, Angela probably can't put it up, but you can go and take a look at that. If I look at my dashboard, my E S R dashboard, is there a way that I have, why have you put? No, I'm not logged in.
Yeah, you're not, I'm trying to get there to see if I can.
Yeah. So if I look at it as of today, you have about seven million dollars. Essentially, you see, so three hundred and fifteen million dollars in the current tranche of E S R funds that was granted to schools, and only three hundred and eight million of that was budgeted, which means there's about seven million dollars of funds that schools were granted. And, and the process is, we grant them the funds, and they propose a budget for approved expenses. We approve that budget, and then they go out and they spend it, and then they submit for reimbursement. There you go, there's, Angela, it's unbelievable. So that's what that dashboard looks like, right? And so it's out there, and you can drill down by individual school district. We have been email corresponding to, and tells you where they're, what they're spending their money on, how they're spending and stuff like that. Truthfully, this dashboard is the envy of many people across the country because of what they can do with it. And then I'm gonna, if you show you something, Angela, if you're able to go back one screen to just the initial landing page for iGrant, then I'm gonna show them something else. But, so, you know, we've been, we're communicating with the schools, like, you gotta get this done. But if they don't have it budgeted, that means that they haven't even figured out how they're gonna do it. I mean, at the state level, we're in the same boat, like, we're trying to land a plane, right? Like, so we're literally scrambling, moving money around contracts, right? Because somebody said, well, I'm gonna spend this money, but, well, how much are you gonna spend? If you're not gonna spend it, we'll give it to somebody who will spend it, right? And so, and again, I can't do that seamlessly. That means fiscal committee and governor and council meetings, and you're like, yeah, not easy. But we're getting to the end of it. So Angela, if you would click down on the E S R tab there, or actually, you can just go to, you can go to another year, click on another year, that's through twenty-two, because that's where E S R go. Twenty-three, if it were twenty-four, twenty-three, I think this one is, I've got it at this point in time. Yeah, and then you can just pick another grant. So essentially, you can see, like, okay. So what I did is that the money that we spent to build the E S R dashboard, I just leveraged. So this is the charter school program, right?
I'll just start the first one.
Yeah. And so you can see the same kind of thing. It's not as interesting, because you don't have, you know, it's, it's a limited number of schools and stuff like that. But what we did was just leveraged the, the same technology we had for the E S R money. And then all I did is I linked up all of my other federal grants. And so I go, ongoing basis, so you see that twenty-three, twenty-four are right there. Yeah, Title I is probably the one that's most popular, because that's sort of where he wants to see how Title I is being used, and it has much more broadly distributed. So there's forty-four million dollars, and it's all budgeted, pretty much, right? You'll see that. Right, and then you can see who's spending it, what they're spending it on. And so if somebody wanted to go look at their individual district, you know, that information is all transparent out there. I'm gonna say this, I hope I don't get in trouble for saying this, but I often will, like, if a vendor calls me and says, like, I have this great product for the schools, and I'm like, why don't I make buying decisions for schools? The schools make those buying decisions. And if you wanna know who maybe has a need, go look in here and see if they've got a Title I need that they haven't figured out how they're gonna do it. This would be a way to help target some of that activity. But, uh, so all of this money is transparent across all the programs at this point in time, so that's. That'd be great.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they.
Wonderful.
Yeah. I mean, we're actually working with the S L D S grant that we got. We're actually, so you guys know, we did this, you know, iPlatform, you have it for all of the data, the, the academic performance for the kids, the teachers, like, we got salaries. You know, a number of us teachers assigned that are within their credential areas, all, all, you know, disciplinary issues, how many suspensions, in-school suspension, out-school suspension, all that data's all captured on iPlatform. We're actually, with the S L D S grant, we're building a financial system. So that's a grant system, but now the financial recording, the D O E twenty-five, which are the financial statements for the schools. So you're gonna have the same type of tech, data visualization and technology on the financial performance for all of the schools as well.
I think that's a great data. I highly recommend for everybody, even anybody just at home watching. If ever you could choose an evening, open up your computer and go through iPlatform, and I'll probably be there with you. And it's like the volume of information that you can just.
Easily accessed.
Easily, easily accessed, but, so I come, I used to be a newspaper journalist. We, it was not very long ago, if you wanted any of this information, you had to physically go down to the school that's where, during business hours, and get it, if they even knew where it was. And it was really hard to access.
Dealing yourself.
I know. And now, if you can just do it at night on your laptop, then it's incredible. Any taxpayer can do it, any parent can do it. And the data there is really, like.
I refer to this as having a good conversation tool. Because essentially, what was happening is you had a lot of people, you know, you go to school board meetings or some other meeting, and somebody says something, and somebody else says something else, and neither one of them has the correct information, so they end up talking past one another. So this is like, okay, now we're all on the same page, we can have this, you know, intelligent conversation.
And that's another, that's a really great point, is that, especially in the social media, you see a lot of misinformation out there about what a district is spending, or what their enrollment is, or what their test scores are. You can just share stuff, rumor and all that, and you can go, it's right there.
Yeah, it's all right there.
It's great.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have another question, do you, so you had nine percent of schools self-report that they were only partially compliant with the three oh sixes. That seems high. They have to be compliant, so what were some of the reasons, do we know, why you would have districts that aren't compliant with the minimum standard?
So I think what I, let me see, so eighty percent of schools, so eighty-seven to one. There were, there were a couple of partially complete, I don't have the report for me, I should have, like, had that with me. It was, I think, computer science, and actually, I'm looking at Candice, if she can remember too. Like, is it computer science was the most reported, did not meet the expectation area of partially complete? And what was the second highest, or the?
Digital learning.
And digital learning, yeah. So those are the two places that had schools recorded not, you know, partially compliant.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, is Caitlin wanna comment? Do you wanna comment on that, Caitlin? I didn't see you there, but it's better that she talks to this, right?
Well, I need to prompt and read the report, it's been a while since I looked at it.
Yeah.
But it's been, so our process is, is in itself reporting, we don't necessarily have, we don't ask them why they are at this facility, they are or they are not. We are expanding the narrative. This, this year that we did was a kind of a learning experience for us, because the department hasn't fully implemented iGAS for probably at least ten years. And so it was kind of a learning experience. We're going to probably look, some of our responses, as you can imagine, came something out with little direction. We got a vast variety of responses.
Quality of the reporting.
Quality, yes, right. And, and, but why was not an answer that we asked in the past? The Commissioner corrected it, it was digital, computer science and digital learning, which are one of the newest content areas of the minimum sectors as well. And so we think that might be partially contributing why a fair number of the schools reported that they were not compliant in this area.
Gotcha. Thanks, I was just curious.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, so we have a two o'clock public hearing, right? I'm gonna pass some consent agenda stuff, and then take a one break.
Drew, we could probably also do a non-public quickly.
Yeah, well, I think maybe we take a break first, just a really short break, and then come back to you. In fact, why don't we, just for interest of time, why don't we go ahead and take a couple minute break?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back and do the non-public, before the public hearing. Actually, I would have taken that all. So we'll take, I tend to. Yeah, if you want, the non-public. Take them off the table.
A second.
Okay. Oh, and they were taking off the table. You can vote to approve minutes if you weren't there, maybe, right? That's.
How do I do that?
That's oddly, you know. It's, yeah, you can ignore it.
And why have we had them on the table for so long?
Well, we've been trying to just stick to, you know, when everybody is there.
I think the way it is, is you can abstain, but you, but we can move them ahead, you know?
So who, who was, uh?
There are eight, eight, nine were there.
So Jim, Bo wasn't there either, so we weren't there.
Phil was there, Drew was there, Jim was there. Jim wasn't on board yet.
Yeah, so that's, that gives us three.
Raj, Raj was here.
Raj was here, but he's not. Raj was here, but he's not here now. Yeah, so, he'll be back next.
Three of, so it has to be, it's three of the quorum, majority of the quorum approving.
Yeah, and, and three and two abstains, that'll pass it. Okay, so who wanna do the main minutes as a standalone?
Uh, I vote to approve the, for May, September, September, May, nine question for me.
Second. Oh, Jim got it. I was there, first Jim. Jim won here.
Tea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Jim abstains.
I abstained.
You abstained. So that's Phil, me and Jim won. Okay, to approve. Okay.
For May, right?
For May.
That's what you're assuming. You're assuming, you didn't hear it.
I did, he did?
I, I abstained, I didn't vote.
I didn't hear an approval.
Yeah. He said I.
He said I, he said I. Um, okay, June. Who was now your?
I was not here for five years. I was July I wasn't here.
Are you pulling over?
Were you?
I'm pulling over.
Were you here?
That's another one, yeah.
July?
Yeah, I was here.
Okay.
So then we can do.
So, yeah, you, me, Jim and, and me, you, Jim and me.
You, you mean Jim and me?
Yeah. You were not.
Were you in kind of missing, kind of the far?
Just unable to attend due to prior commitments, Kate and Phil.
We have enough. I moved out.
If they, if we have Andy, dude.
Yep. That's so important to me, yeah.
Oh, yep, no, I was not. I had worked with him.
Yeah, you were, you were virtual in July, but you were not.
Anthony was always right. I'm not, but, but thanks.
I, I, in June, I, I missed May, so it's.
Okay, so, yeah, so Jim, the Jim, uh. That's, then you. Okay, so we can do, okay, so motion to approve the June minutes.
Aye.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained. Okay. Moving on.
Who seconded that motion? I'm sorry.
Jim, yeah.
Jim, Jim was, okay, sorry.
Okay.
So I vote to approve the minutes that July I would have.
I was virtual.
You were virtual, I was. You do it if you're right.
Second. Okay.
Jim was here. On the record.
All right, right there.
Don't you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good. And that's your time. Okay, Clarksville disfor, school district. Area agreement. Motion.
I move to, oh, can I say that this is state.
Yeah, we just.
Authorization to Abernathy, Clarksville, Pittsburgh area, two thousand twenty six to thirty six, barricade rate.
Anybody second?
I can, Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so we have a relinquishment of a charter.
That's what you did already.
We did not approve it.
Oh, you have to do it?
No, yeah, so we can go on and help to accept.
I move to accept the leave charter school freedom of mission of their charter dated June twenty first, two thousand twenty four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Sad, but, um.
Nicest young man tried to try, nicest.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wow, you don't, you don't make.
You're a leaf.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't think.
Twenty hundred thousand dollar grand scape bank. Yeah, well, yeah. Can you live in a bank of like stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
I was like, lending officer on that one.
He came back to New Hampshire because he wanted to be in New Hampshire. He takes over the school that didn't have. Except for him, he was.
A lot of baggage.
Yeah, I mean, it's like to kill it off, but it's just a bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That's. So, um, so Caitlin, can I put you on the spot again? And I don't know if you, um, I, I guess, just for purposes of general discussion.
Sorry, if you hang out, this is what happens.
Um, cause we have a half an hour to kill and we're talking about charter schools. Um, so back when Jane was, uh, doing the charter school office, she and I worked on, uh, sort of a really rough draft of legislative changes that we'd like to see. I don't know, that's, there's been process going on since then. And we've got, um, working on rules that we wanna see changed. So, um, can you just give us some, like, from your office? I know there's a lot of discussion, there's still a lot of movement, hogging categorizing about if we want. Cause I think there's universal agreement on the board that we need to strengthen the charter school rules as well as the statutes need to be strengthened in the legislative law. To give us, uh, in, in, in my own view of it is, um, we need to clarify a lot of the board's oversight. What we have authority to, to do and order and how we don't, uh, clarify some of our expectations. Clean up some of the reporting requirements, because there's a lot of paperwork they're requiring of us that isn't necessarily useful. And then there's stuff on governments that I think we'd like to see, to the extent that we can do it in rule. We will try, but then there's some statutory stuff we are gonna ask for authority to. So one of the things that Jim and I are in a total agreement on is, um, we need to be able to have a requirement for a certain percentage of the board that business experience, right? So there's all kinds of things that we're looking at doing charter schools that would make it, um, make them more accountable and stronger as organizations. And sort of strengthen our oversight of them a little bit. So I, is there anything that, along that process that you think is worth just having a district?
So I mean, to your point, the laws, the way they are right now are maybe US at best. And part of that is just because of the way that they were implemented. So charter schools originally, the charter law, they were written in the, the nineties. There were no charter schools for quite some time. So whenever you write a law and then you have a program that you need to implement as a result of the law, the first few years that you're trying to implement that program, mostly you spend a lot of time identifying challenges in the law and the things that you need addressed. Most recently, you recall, we went and we did the building aid rules. And that was because there was a building aid program that was established in law, was then funded, we tried to implement it. We felt there were quite a few challenges. And so we're kind of in that same place with charter schools. So law was written, charter schools, um, started forming several years after that. And the law originally was, um, written with the intent that charter schools would be authorized locally and then the state board would have been authorized. Then, uh, maybe of two thousand eight-ish time, um, the state board authorization process became, um, uh, part of the law. But rather than identifying a whole separate set of laws, kind of just paste it on the existing law. And then now additional, uh, requirements of charter schools and what have changed over the last fifteen years since then. And I think relative to the way that charter schools are operated, which makes what, it makes sense and what we're trying to implement, there's just a lot of confusion. Um, specifically around the formation of charter schools and who can form a charter school. Um, I think part of the challenge is that schools right now, they form a nonprofit to bring to the state board of education and then a second nonprofit to then actually operate the school. And then the first one, which is often has a charter school foundation, kind of falls along with the wayside, which is not necessarily needed a lot of times going forward, just the, and so if we had these more streamlined processes, I think would be very helpful. Um, we, um, before the pandemic, I believe it was, we had a charter school, which three, I don't remember what that was. Um, and then I think a lot of it got derailed by the pandemic. And I think it would be very helpful as the board with the department had a retreat again to really look at all of the laws. And then that being really the starting ground, not even looking at the rules, because a lot of the challenges are really with the laws and the, and the rules right now. Because of the contradictions or conflicts in the law, the rules have problems. It'll be, it's not even a law fix, it's a rule. We really need to start fresh. As far as accountability requirements, you know, we've developed new tools, mostly along the lines of, um, requirements that we're allowed to require with either ESSA, because almost all of the charter schools that are operational receive that little ESSA funding, so we're totally accountable to those measures. Um, we've implemented some financial measures, so we feel our best practices, but not necessarily clearly defined in the law. So I think we could do a lot more on that. Um, especially with the oversight and support that we provide around for, for schools on that, because that is where they struggle the most. But the law is a companion to that. So I, I think that a good starting point would be for us to everybody get very familiar with the charter school law. And then we will know why we are oftentimes cross-eyed when we're looking at it. And then us work as a group to say, well, what is the intent of what we're trying to do? And then let's write that into the law.
Yeah, I, I, I think it'd be useful to sort of go back and revisit the conclusions we came to, sort of the big picture conclusions we came to from that retreat, which was, I allow it, we allow passport and everything to be told. And then just look at, we don't have to start from scratch, you know, whereas we, we began this process of looking at it, came up with a kidsy, big picture ways of, uh, identifying problems in the law, for example. So we already have some of that work done. Maybe we can follow up with a second retreat, like starting where we left off. Cause I think some of this, as far as the timeline goes, um, yeah, we'll have a new legislature. We'll have December, November to introduce that L S R. So if we have something, um, in place that has some recommendations for here, a couple of big areas where if you made these changes, that would be very helpful. Maybe we could get somebody to introduce something.
I actually think that you could get by far as in support from, because we've had, I've had co- conversation with Representative Cordelli and Representative, who know about it.
Oh, I think so, yeah.
Um, and they are all interested in working that. I mean, of course, it, the way it has a much direction to go with, but everybody thinks that the lease agreement of the law needs to be.
Yeah, and I think even a lot of charter school folks agree, um, some of the requirements that are placed on them are burdensome without a lot of value.
Correct.
And then some of them are a little too vague. And so it creates a, a gray area where, uh, it would be helpful for them and for us if there's clarity on where our authority extends, what their responsibilities are. So I think we could do this in a bipartisan way. I don't think it has to be, you know, any sort of, um, political guy there. You know, want them to be as accountable as possible and successful.
Didn't Nate, you and Nate do a bunch of?
Nate and I, Nate and I worked on it, Jane and I worked on it. Uh, just a, more of a brainstorming thing. This was a year ago. And then the pandemic kind of threw everything off, so.
And we give you a comprehensive revision of the rules as a result of that, but it, the challenges are so much deeper than the rules.
Yeah, and that's the problem that faces a lot of statute. There, there was, in, to, keeping consistent with our, um, desire not to go beyond our legislative authority, there were things we wanted to require that we just didn't feel like we could without legislative approval, so.
If we revisit that, I'd love to be a part of that.
Of course, yeah, oh, we'll, we'll.
I think it's the, the whole.
We'll do those a whole.
I mean, and even through, you know, our work that we've done in the last two years, with the resources from the CSP brand. There's duplication in the law which charter schools are required to do with us and the charitable trust unit. We don't, we don't need two different state agencies essentially having either the same but separate or different competing priorities. And so we really need to make sure that, you know, they're, we're kind of covered all around and that we're streamlining processes as much as possible. Like, for example, with the audits, um, the charitable trust and us both collect audits. Well, let's just have one streamlined process. We can talk to each other and, you know, work together. And we're able to do that much better as a state going forward, once we kind of take a, kind of understand this. Registration with the Secretary of State, it's just, it's one of those things that, uh, it's confusing to people, but if we have clear processes and, and why you're doing it and what the value of that process is, we'll, uh, we'll have improved charter schools.
Yeah. Anybody, I just thought it'd be a good topic.
Thirteen minutes.
I was, I was gonna say thirteen minutes. No, it's actually concerned.
Philibus recall, huh?
No, no, it was actually fourteen minutes, because we can start till two oh one.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Sticker, I know.
I never mind clock. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Well, we could have Hal come down and give us a base performance if we brought his.
Yep. What else can we do?
We could, we could.
Here's our September meeting, Raj will be back.
Oh, good.
Sheesh.
Okay, huh?
She's gonna dial in.
Budapest. Well, it can be the better markets.
Heard daughters like flying on planes, you know?
She's a helicopter.
Helicopter, yeah.
She's twenty seventh of Septemberish.
Louise.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
My dad has the proudest of accomplishments of getting this.
What, what's, what's funny, she sends us lots of pictures. So she's either in the front seat or she's in the backseat, or she's in the front seat, backseat, another person in the front seat. And she's just taking photographs, you know, and it's, it's like, you know, big open doors.
Where's the training?
She's in the Marine Corps.
So with the training, what category?
At Pensacola.
Oh, it is in Pensacola.
Yeah.
So is she gonna only do trappers or?
Yeah, to her platform. So she's gonna find out whether she's, she's hoping to get Cubies, um, like it'll be fifty three. The other, one platform is grounded. The Osprey's grounded.
Yeah, you know what, I, I can't say, okay.
Did she, um, establish she wanted to do is, what, trappers are dangerous.
We all wanted the, the ski one thirties.
Yeah, yeah.
Just 'cause, you know, it, it dumps into, into our future travel plans much, much better.
They're cool.
But she can still crossover. I mean, she's, she, she fucking knows how to fly, you know?
My dad is flying Apache.
So is that, is that the army?
Army, yeah, yeah. ROTC, ROTC.
Nice. What, what year are you graduated?
Oh, four years ago.
My son went to George Washington ROTC and he's a Marine Brothers of Staff, so she's like, he's, I'll get two. Yep.
Ten.
So that's all. So I'm checking out my things.
Interprudent dance.
Yeah, there you go, right. Actually, how about breakdancing? Interprudent breakdancing?
There's, there's no interpretive.
No, no, I saw someone.
There's no one.
Oh, my Ray Gun from Australia.
It's breakdancing. There's no interpretive.
Oh, when the woman was at.
I think that was interpretive breakdancing.
That, yeah, I didn't bother watching. What I didn't see, but which I found to be the most impressive, was the four second fifty foot climb. Speed, why do you?
Sounds amazing.
Yeah, where they lose their fingernails. Because if they miss, if they miss the poles, they lose their fingernails. So a lot of, just a lot of. Four seconds. Having a physicality, that's like.
Do they just like run at the wall and start flying?
I don't know, I didn't watch it. I just, I just wrote up.
Oh, okay.
Makes you think it's sex.
Love speed driving, seven hundred and eighty.
See, that's.
Back those past weekend.
Oh, that was right.
Twenty hour, you got fifteen hours down, fifteen hour.
If you don't advertise how fast you were.
This is your Olympic event.
With this money, yeah, they should be driving.
If they, if you drop into many colors.
Uh, George Peck, my son.
Okay.
Oh, right. Wanted to get him to stay in the Pilates gear, I couldn't convince him.
At least it's a good airport that, at least it's.
Yeah, you can fly down there.
If we're not there.
Flying, yes, driving.
Not so much. Well, with mine, with Holden.
It's a little light.
What's up?
It's a little light.
Do you see in Annapolis? That was, once I did that a couple times dur- during COVID, it was crazy.
Although it has.
I did seven hours versus the typical ten hours.
That whole area is beautiful.
Yeah, Annapolis is cool.
Yep. She's there with last, the new, last weekend.
I think we should do driving as well, next point.
Sure.
Wow.
But why not?
But they have to pick, but you, then you have to pick the platforms.
You didn't have one.
F one or Indy cars or?
I mean, I, I.
I think it's the expense part.
Exactly, it's hard enough to be an athlete, now you gotta buy like a four hundred dollar car.
That would be a lot of spending. And, and it really, it would, it would be, you know, it was like the kid on the, what team and the father bought the, bought the team, so this son could be on the crew.
Oh, really?
Not boss, what's the name, which one is it?
So it's, um, I don't know, when they had art, when the Olympics, the poetry.
Arts.
The poetry, they did, the poetry, uh, and painting.
They did not. And it's.
Well, because the guy, so there was this, uh, French nobleman who was one of the big, uh, movers behind creating the Olympics.
How do you measure who's the winner?
And, well, well, we do, you do what, you do what he did. So he, he went to the, you know, he sort of was behind the creation of the whole modern Olympics and one of the big research and so.
They did.
His idea was that would help. His idea was that we'd have all these gen- that's why you have fencing and jav- it was supposed to be these gentlemanly, uh, high road sports.
Oh, wait.
And nobody cared until they put soccer and stuff like that in it, boxing, and people started to come to it. So in keeping it with the gentlemanly thing, he's like, well, we ought to have, um, poetry and painting and, uh, the, people said.
Postions.
People said no, and he said, well, my mind, like, if I'm gonna do it, he put him, he put poetry and painting in. And he personally judged the poetry submissions, and the winner who got a gold medal in poetry was a pseudonymous, uh, uh, author, uh, who put this horrible poem in, who it was later discovered was this nobleman. He submitted a poem under an assumed name and gave himself the gold medal. Not corrupt at all, not corrupt at all. There's never been any corruption in the Olympics. Back in the, they used to, uh, they used, because it was a gentleman's thing, right? Um, in ancient, the ancient Olympics, they had horse racing, so you, you, regular horse racing, you have charity racing. But the jockeys didn't get the medals.
It's the owner of the horse.
Owner got the medals.
Oh, my lord.
Yeah, so, back in the old days.
Yeah.
They would just pop out.
Look, look, we drive a car without yourself.
Yeah, there's a car without you.
And all we're gonna have to do after this.
And that's it, too, so we need to just round.
You can, you can like. Just be out a lot of younger.
No problem.
It's just that we have, yeah, we have five minutes left until this.
The best.
We only have like fifteen minutes. Can extend them a little if we need it.
Well, we can probably look into it.
That's a good question.
Probably, then we could just schedule.
Right. The best Olympics sport is biathlon.
Yeah.
Shooting and skiing.
Shooting and skiing.
Done?
Five pieces, five pieces, yeah.
Yeah. Here.
Yeah.
Can I do, can I do?
Well, some. Some of them.
Does he have skeet shooting?
There's high school skeet shooting.
Yeah, that's cool.
Can they?
It's, they practice in Hudson.
Yeah, there's, uh, fishing teams, that's. They used to have, like when I was growing up, it was still a past thing, we didn't do it anymore, but, um, there were still some schools that had riflery in the U S, yeah, shotgun team.
There was scholarship, scholarship, college team and the high school team. It's Pinkerton, Memorial, Concord Christian.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
And, uh, Manchester West has R O T C riflery. So you have to be in the R O T C, but they do riflery competitions. But it used to do, I mean, shooting sports used to be a regular high school, uh, and you still go to college, but you can't, like the pathway to get to college now is, they have teams and you can get scholarships, but if you don't have a high school team, they're, you know.
So if they throw this on the team, my son has got a scholarship in Jacksonville.
That's awesome.
For for shooting.
I did, uh, shooting in college, but they didn't have a, it was just kind of a, well, it was still a team, but it was, it was still officially a team, but it was like halfway devoted to club, Jabal at the club, and it's just a few of us who did it.
U N H has got a team, U N H competes with West Point, they, they play at a high level.
What is it?
U N H.
Shooting.
Shooting. Shotgun, yeah, it's a skeet shooting.
Skeet, skeet.
Did you watch any Olympics skeet shooting?
A little bit, yeah. Vincent Hancock was part of the group that my son's in.
Oh, man, I watched a few minutes of that.
You're good, huh?
Twenty-four out of twenty-five every time, yeah.
Or you can hit type four?
I can, but I used to, but not every time, dude, I mean, I was just like, they didn't miss anything.
Right.
This is amazing.
Yeah.
I, I'm not, that's good.
I can even get flying flies for them. It's good that none of my children dig after me, my, my daughter.
It wouldn't be flying helicopters, right, yes.
They are cold, very few shots.
Oh, that's cool.
Um, but it is, there's some disconnect between here and, you know, I don't.
Basically, your husband.
Which are easy to make up.
See, you get comes from one side of the house.
Yeah, they got the height for me, they got the shooting hysteria.
Did they get the sense of style?
Yeah.
They have the fashion sense, and that, that translated.
So when they were little growing up, I refused to let my sons wear T-shirts and had anything on them, because they were not gonna advertise for anyone. And so they wore nothing, they were the plainest.
Yeah.
And so they, they now very happily receive all the gifts I sent them in the fair.
I, I, I convinced my sons, I, I explained to my sons when they were elementary school and like middle school, I explained to them, they're wanting to buy the brand name T-shirts. Like, guys, the trick is, you don't pay somebody to advertise their brand, you let them pay you, pass, wait till you get to that point.
Two minutes?
One.
One.
We started one after.
Start at four, then two oh one.
And you started, I thought by this it's at two.
Okay, alright, I'll go by you.
Okay, I'm just keeping track on time.
Keeping track.
I wanna go to nine people watching this conversation. Nine participants.
What another five story you might get to a little, Rob, Joseph was a year and a half, and Rob was three and a half.
How, when is this starting?
It's very.
Because, uh.
It's very short.
Oh, it's very.
And Rob had a, had a Fisher Price basketball hoop, looked like, it hung around forever, and Joseph had a year and a half. He started walking at seventeen months, a month later, he takes a basketball walk, steps in a basketball hoop and sinks it, rots him, what you doing?
Isn't that how you use that?
Two thirty.
Okay, you're, you're.
Okay.
Joseph did talk.
No one came, no one came to the hearing, so we close, so hearing on, you go five oh two, you have a one?
Nope.
Question to enter.
Several.
I think you got a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Nice, sir.
You too.
For some reason, you can't.
Get back in time to just start.